We are live on YouTube.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Hello, everyone. We're going to go ahead and begin tonight's study session. We have two items on the agenda. The first is a presentation on the budget for the enterprise fund. So I will turn that over to whoever is giving that presentation.
Incomisque.
That would be me. And with me is Kimberly Kaufman. She's our budget manager. For the finance department and as Anthony would always remind everybody as we start the enterprise funds is this afternoon, this evening that you are trustees of the enterprise funds. You're not the city council. So you're trustees of these enterprise funds. So. There we go. Big picture. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll let Kim start off the finance section as far as what brought us along to this process and where we are right now.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kim Kaufman, the Budget Manager, as Ken said. And at this point, we're nearing the end of the budget process, which is the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. We've had an overview of the capital budget, the general and special revenue funds, and we've had our first public budget hearing. And today we'll be discussing the fiscal year 2021 budget for enterprise or utility funds. After that will be one more public budget hearing, another study session if needed, and a final public hearing. Oh, I have that twice. Council will consider the budget for adoption on June 9. So just an overview of our enterprise funds, they operate like a business with the expectation that user fees will fund the cost of operation. We have three enterprise funds and two sub funds. We have the water fund where we account for water revenues and expenses related to the supply and treatment of water for our residents. Then we have the sanitation fund where we account for revenues and expenditures related to solid waste collection and disposal. Next is the water reclamation or wastewater fund, which accounts for sewer collection, conveyance and treatment. And the water reclamation fund has two sub funds, the sewer maintenance fund, which accounts for revenues and expenditures related to our $5 sewer maintenance rate, and the new development excise tax fund, which accounts for revenues and capital project expenditures from excise tax levied on new development.
So for our water fund, just to review, this is an overview of our plant and we serve 4.3 billion gallons annually. And obviously we run 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And we're very, very proud. We've been over 10 years, the facility without a recordable injury, which the last three years have had significant amount of construction. That's what that top right hand picture is, where they still operate 24 hours a day in all types of weather and all types of conditions and they still did that without a recordable injury. So that's really phenomenal. Part of the water fund is also water line maintenance. So we maintain over 600 miles of water pipe throughout Norman, over 6,000 fire hydrants, and we repair about 180 water line breaks each year. And that's really good because just a few years ago, it was over 200. And when I started, it was about 250 water line breaks a year. So they're making inroads of fixing older water lines and repairing them or replacing them actually. So they maintain over 1,000 fire hydrants each year and they maintain over 40,000 water meters. So our weight rate history, we started the inverted rate block in 1999. That's where the more water you use, the more expensive it gets. And that was really efficient as far as encouraging customers to use less water. We had a water rate increase in 2006. So it looks like about every six, five, six, seven years, we have a rate increase. So from 1999 to 2006, from 2006, it was four years. And in 2010, that one vote, that vote failed. And we came back in January of 2015. That one passed to got us where we are right now. And we're looking, we really do need a water rate increase in this upcoming year, 21. This is our current fee structure. We do have a base fee, whether you use water or not, you pay $6. And then you can see the rates per thousand gallons goes up, the more water you use, the more expensive it gets. We also have a summer surcharge during July and August. For large users that use over 20,000 gallons a month, there's a 35 cent per 1,000 gallon surcharge on top of that. And all the time, we do have mandatory odd and even watering rotation system for your, for irrigation systems.
So every year we do a comparison of Norman's utility rates to 15 other cities with similar characteristics. And the water rates, the comparison of the water rates are shown here. And as you can see, we found Norman's water rates to be about 23% lower than the average rate for 10,000 gallons of usage in this comparison. Only Ponca City, Ardmore and Midwest City had lower water rates than Norman for this level of usage.
So the major revenue assumptions going forward is that the user fees are estimated a growth rate for our new customers. And our connection fees remain the same since 2016. And they go up significantly. You know, three quarter inch meters, a normal house, that would be a $1,000 connection fee. A one inch meter goes up to $1,600, two inch meter is $6,000. And it goes up exponentially depending on the size of the water meter you need. If we're thinking as a council or not council, but trustees, that we need a water rate increase for a vote in January of 21, we would have to have the first reading in October of 20. So that's something to keep in mind if we wish to pursue that avenue. The expenditure assumptions, we have a water purchase contract with Oklahoma City. So we have a take or pay contract with Oklahoma City. We take a million gallons a day. And we spend about $1.2 million a year doing that. That goes, that rate goes up every year. Between 4 and 5%, it's expected to go up 5% at the end of this year. CUMCD is the Central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District. That's the manager of the Lake Thunderbird. And we pay mostly power costs to pump the water for us, but we also pay their operating costs. And as you know, we paid down the debt. So there is really no debt service for the reservoir anymore, but we pay them about $1.1 million a year. Part of that, since it's a Bureau of Reclamation Reservoir and Conveyance System, the Dell City Raw Water Pipeline that just goes from Lake Thunderbird up to Dell City is being replaced this year. It's a two-year project. But because it was a Bureau Reservoir and all the conveyance systems and we're part of that, of the, of the three cities, Dell City, Midwest City and Norman, our share of Dell City's water line, we're still going to pay 43% of the cost of replacing their water line. So that's about a $5, $6 million project. This year, we only have $149,000 included in the capital equipment replacement and purchases. That's really not bad. It can go anywhere from 150,000 to 250,000. That's to replace trucks and equipment for not just a water treatment plant, but also water line maintenance. So this year is actually kind of low. We have one skid steer to purchase. We have a number of computers to purchase. It also purchased the computers for the admin building for myself and our engineers. That the water fund that will get them reimbursed by the other enterprise funds for their proportionate share. So the ending fund balance this year is estimated to be $10 million. That's a timing thing because we're just finishing up the, the water treatment plant, significant rehabilitation of that. But you look at fiscal year 22, we have a negative $28 million budget. So that's obviously something we can't do. But we'll get into how we can smooth out that $28 million negative number in just a minute here. So there's lots and lots of projects on the water side. We replace water lines throughout Norman. Again, there's 600 miles of water lines to replace. Some of these are listed here. So there's a Robinson Waterline Phase Two and Phase Four. Those are big ticket items. We have segment D. We have a lot of our water line replacements are would be called segment D or, or something or segment B, things of that nature. Because we had a modeling done a number of years ago that lays out all of our water lines and they look at the, the significant ones that really convey water, you know, from east to west or from north to south to make sure there's an equal distribution of water and pressures throughout Norman. So these are some of the major lines that we have to replace. Parsons War Line was a subdivision west of campus that was done earlier this year. And 24th Avenue Water Line, a lot of times we, well, not a lot, we work well with Public Works. And so as this example here on the 24th Avenue Northeast, Public Works was, we were expanding the road from two lanes to four lanes. And we have one of our major transmission lines there. And so we would then replace that water line and they would replace the road on top of it. Sometimes it works out well. Where we want to replace the water line and they partner with us and, and that way we don't have to go back and replace the, the road. They're doing that as their part of their project. And sometimes they want to replace the road. And that water line under it may not be high on our, on our list of projects to replace. But in the interest of they're putting a brand new road down and sidewalks, it'd be better for us to replace it at that time. So sometimes we're the cause of helping do something and sometimes they're the cause of making us replace a water line. But we work well together. So this is an example of the Robinson Street Water Line project. Have you noticed on the eastern side, the water treatment plant? And it goes all the way across to the Brookhaven Tower on the western side. So if you start from the east, that $2.3 million project is just been completed. Chris Mattingly was a project engineer on that. So that one's just wrapped up. The next piece from 24th Avenue to 12th Avenue on the east side is, is under design that hasn't started yet. The, the big red piece in the middle is $5.3 million to go from 12th Avenue Northeast to Robinson Tower. We pushed that off for a year or two. So we haven't gotten to that yet. The next piece is $3.9 million from the water from Robinson Water Tower to just about the Serpentine Road or University North Park. That's under design. Nathan Maddenwald is our project engineer on that. And that's an item that will come for you, I think in this next council meeting. Nathan was able to get easements from university. So we can push our water line a little bit away from the road and have an easement from the university to put our water line in. So that worked out great. The $3.2 million project was really congested area. It went from University of North Park under I-35 over towards Brookhaven Square, right about where the Waffle House is. Mark Daniels was a project engineer on that and that's been completed and done. And then Mark was also the project engineer on the next piece, the green piece, which was $3.2 million to take it from where it left off there at the Waffle House across 36th Avenue, which is a very congested road. A lot of utilities there, a lot of traffic, obviously, over to Brookhaven Tower. We're just about finishing that one. So you can just see with the, the price tags of these big projects, you're looking at at least a 30 inch water line, 30 inch diameter water line. It's millions of dollars to go from one end to the other. So some of the projects that we started in 20 will be completed in 21. The, the phase two of our water treatment plan, again, that was a 35 plus million dollar project. It's taken three years. We thought we would be done before now, but all the equipment, all the new equipment is in, it's just now tweaking it to make sure it operates the way it's supposed to. And that everything is, is up to snuff and we're fulfilling all their obligations to make sure the warranties hold. So we should be having the grand opening to that sometime early summer. So. And along with that was our water well projects. That was over $10 million to supply new water wells out east. We've drilled six of the nine that we anticipate. And then of course, we have to then include all the piping to get those wells back into our distribution system. So that's, those are two projects. The, the treatment plan is well underway, about ready to wrap up. And the water wells, there's a lot of work that goes in beforehand on the water wells as far as the hydraulic or hydro, the hydro geographic area to see if there were, there's water underground and then this to negotiate prices with landowners and to get the permitting through OWRB, all before you can even start punching a hole in the ground. Major projects in 20, that will be then finished in 21. Again, is another piece of the Robinson Waterline that I showed you on the map. Gray Avenue or Gray Road Street, you can see out in front of the city hall here, we have pipes stored. So that'll be done. Interstate Water Line, we haven't started that project yet, but that goes on the west side of I-35 from the mall up to Robinson. Flood Replacement, this goes from Robinson essentially up to Venture. This is a big line that will run all the way up north, south following flood. And James Gardner Avenue, again, from the library to Robinson. We're working again with Public Works on this. They're going to extend the roadway up from James Gardner across Robinson up to Flood. And we're partnering with them. We're going to be putting in a water line that we don't have there now. So that'll be good. So the new projects that are listed in this year's budget going forward, the proposed budget is a new building for line maintenance. It's $1.6 million from the water fund. This is for line maintenance. So it's also going to have a matching amount from the water reclamation fund. So it'll be water and sewer building. That will remove our line maintenance facility from North Base over to across the street from the water treatment plant. As a porter, water line replacement, again, working with Public Works on that, they're going to do the Porter Corridor. This was one of the water lines we did not have in our immediate calendar to replace. It was several years out, but we want to take advantage of Public Works during the streets and sidewalks. So then will we go ahead and replace the water line while we're there, while they're there actually. The same thing with Jenkins down by the university. We're working with them to replace that water line or upgrade it significantly. And then our own line maintenance crews spend $300,000 to $400,000 annually, just upgrading smaller sections of water pipe, underserved areas where they might need additional fire hydrants, just replacing fire hydrants valves, things of that, more of the maintenance type, maintenance type projects. So new for 21, again, will be the well field blending. This is a project again that is coming up on this year's budget. We have two large sources of water, right? We have our water treatment plant that gets water from Lake Thunderbird. And then we have all of our wells. We have over 30 wells, operational wells. Now we're going to get nine more. So we'll have close to 40 wells. Each of those are individual point of entry into the system. So if not even if we get a bad back tea test as an example, but the university gets a bad bacteriological test or a mobile home park gets a bad bacterial test, we have to go out and take water samples from every one of those wells. At the time they're running that they had a bad back tea test at the university or at a mobile home park. So it's a lot of work. Each one of those is a point of entry into the system and our wells are not disinfected. So our water treatment plant actually obviously treats the water and disinfects it and sends it into distribution system. Our wells are not disinfected and DEQ is pushing hard to have all the water throughout any facility, any facility disinfected. And so by blending the water, we're hoping to get all of our wells into one location and build like a three or four million gallon storage tank. And then we'd be able to have one point to disinfect the water as we send it to town as opposed to having 35 or 40 separate little chlorination systems at one at each well throughout East Norman. So it also will provide a central location for treatment in the future if needed. So if right now, our example would be the chromium level is at 100 parts per billion. Our wells are way below that. But if the EPA would decide that they want a chromium level of 10 parts per billion, we would need treatment. Our well water would need treatment. And so we really couldn't afford to put 35 treatment plants all throughout East Norman. We need one location to treat that water. So this is the start of that. Initiate an AMI, that's automatic meter infrastructure. So this would be replacing all of our water meters with meters that can be read from our customer service area here. So we wouldn't need to go out and physically look at each meter. This will add significant amount of operational availability for our customer service people to know, they could just from their desk, they could, if you wanted to move in or out of your apartment, or if you want to move into your house, or you said, boy, my water bill is really high. Do I have a leak? They'd be able to say, well, this is what your water meter reads right now. And, and this is what it read yesterday. So instead of sending somebody out there to do that, they'd be able to, to look at it from their desk. Those are two significant items. Remember I said that going forward, we had a $28 million deficit in 22? Well, these two are the $28 million deficits. It doesn't mean we have to buy it in one year. We can mortgage them or essentially set up, get a bond for both of these. They would have different time limits on it, but it's not like we would need $28 million all at once. And so on the budget sheets, when you look at them for, for year fiscal year 22, it looks like we're $28 million in the hole. But we'd offset that by selling bonds that would have a longer life of 10 or 15 years to be able to pay for these. So we do need money, but we don't need $28 million in one year. The other things I wanted to bring to your attention was a corrosion control study. It's not a big ticket item, $75,000. But again, this is, this is regulations that we, this is not a choice you would have to do. And it's a fallout again from the Flint, Michigan lead fiasco. Our lead numbers have always been really, really low. Up in the past, we've actually been reduced, been able to reduce our testing to just once every three years. That's how good our numbers have been. But again, if somebody messes up, essentially EPA says, everybody has to do this. Everybody has to look at corrosion control. So it's something we're having to do. And similar with the next piece, that cybersecurity is AWIA, which is American Water Infrastructure Act. Again, kind of a fallout from, from the possibility of rigging elections to cyber intrusion onto personnel into personal space or personal computers. So EPA wants all of the utilities to look at what controls. And we have a lot of SCADA systems. We have a lot of information systems that control our treatment plant, you know, that relate to the water tower level and the pressures in the system back to our pumping. And so they, they require all the utilities to look at the infrastructure they have as far as the IT infrastructure they have and to make to make a process to what if that was hacked or how can it not be hacked? And then the water tower coatings is just a painting of our big assets that stick out in the, in the ground of town, the, the Cascade Tower and the Boyd Tower. Cascade will come first and Boyd will be next. So, but it took us about a half million dollars to paint one of those big giant above ground storage towers. So that's the two towers. And then this part is just to look at future projects, but the point here is that we often, when we don't have a water rate increase as we intend, or we put water rates or sewer rates or any of those things off for a number of years. The utility is a capital driven. It's, we have a consistent personnel size. Our, our fixed costs are pretty constant, but it's our capital that, that drives us. And so unfortunately, when we don't get to have a water rate or sewer rate or sanitation rate, it's always pushing off some of our, some of our capital projects. And so this is the example, like the whole park was delayed. Flood Avenue from Gray was, was pushed back from, from 21 to 22. We were thinking of setting up an annual water Ryan, water line replacement program similar to what we have on the, on the, on the sewer side. So all these projects are in the works. They're in the pipeline. They really need to be done. But we always find ourselves having to push them back a year or two or whatever, just to keep us, to keep the budget whole. And of course, one thing we're constantly working on over these last couple of years is, is our IPR project or indirect potable reuse. So that is something that we should look at and just keep in the back of your mind that we take our, our highly treated effluent from the water reclamation facility, send it back through Day Blue Creek, back into Lake Thunderbird and treat it again at our water treatment plant that have a really, really robust and sustainable water supply. Kimberly, you want to start us off with the sanitation fund?
Sure. So residential and commercial collection is greater than 100,000 tons per year. Three recycling drop off centers, greater than 1,400 tons per year, yard waste and compost facility. They bring in 29,000 tons per year. Curbside recycling started in 2008. Republic Services is our current contractor and they bring in more than 90% of our participation rate, greater than 5,000 tons per year. So this is a graph that shows a comparison of our sanitation rates, our monthly charge. And you can see here, we fall almost in the middle. We're about 6% below the average rate when we average all 16 of these rates. And there are eight cities with lower rates than Norman and seven with higher rates. Of the eight cities with lower rates, only two of those also include curbside recycling like Norman does. Back to you, Ken.
Okay. So our last sanitation rate increase was 2011. So this will be 10 years since we've had a rate increase. We don't anticipate needing one in the near future. But that's what brought us to the level we have now, $17.20 a month. Three of the, $3 of that goes to our recycling. And extra poly carts are optional that customers can get at $7 a month. This has a larger capital expenditure, not for capital projects, but for the trucks and stuff. So we spend $2.1 million a year. Sanitation division has over 60 vehicles. A typical garbage truck costs $350,000. So we have, you know, the side load trucks for residential and the front load trucks for commercial and, and our transfer station trucks. And so this also replaces the poly carts, the dumpsters, things of that nature. Our landfill tipping fees, we renegotiated the contract with our landfill last year. So we're really, really happy with that so far. And it runs about $2 million a year. So if you look at the, the last slide, we dispose of about 100,000 tons of solid waste and $2 million a year is, it runs out to be about $20 a ton, which is really, really good. You can ask our city manager, Darryl Pyle. What it was in California is probably about $60 a ton. And here in
$75 a ton, Ken. Thank you.
$75. So we have it really good. And actually this last year, when we renegotiated our landfill prices, we got just a couple cents cheaper than the year before. But it looks like a big number, $2 million a year, but it could be a lot worse. So we're really, really fortunate here. Our recycling contractor, we again collect the $3 a month from our customers and we essentially pay that over. It's about a million and a half dollars a year. We have an ending fund balance of almost $8 million. And again, working with our finance department, we looked at our, our current bonds that we had. And when we built the transfer station in 2011, with the money we had from our last rate increase, we borrowed money for 15 years. And we looked at, it was a 3.45% interest rate and we have the cash on hand right now. So we were paid off those bonds five years early and saved our customers some money. So major projects completed this year, or at least start this year is originally, we thought we'd have a material recovery facility. That's like our, our own little baby Murph, material recovery facility, but it looked like we'd But it looked like it would be more beneficial to our customers. And with the fall of recycling prices, to build our own recycling facility just didn't seem logical. And so we switched that over and we're in the process. Nathan Manda Wall, Maddenwall, sorry, sorry. Nathan is working on the design of our household hazardous waste facility. So this would be really neat, you know, instead of having that once a year thing that we do in the fall for our household hazardous wastes, that's we spend over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars every fall to do that. We'll have our own facility. We'll have our own personnel there and we could open it, you know, a couple of days a week. That'd be really beneficial to our customers. The container maintenance facility, eight hundred thousand dollars. Again, that will end up saving us money in the long run. We'll be able to do a better job of maintaining our dumpsters. Just big sheet metal things that you need to replace and and fix and paint. We'll have our own facility to be able to do that. We're looking at buying the property next to our compost facility, again, to protect us from from our neighbors, essentially to set up a buffer and also to provide a little bit more usable room for us. And then a scale house at our compost facility. We have a scale house at the transfer station. We just need a better in access point as customers enter our compost facility to make sure that we know which ones are the commercial customers, which ones are not from Norman, which ones are from Norman, things of that nature. And then beyond in two thousand twenty-one, we have a new sanitation facility. So we're going to move on to our water reclamation fund. We're really proud of our performance. Again, you know, Mark Daniels took that four or five-year project that we redid our sanitation or not sanitation, our water reclamation facility. We increased the capacity and really upgraded it significantly. And our average flow is about ten million gallons. Right now, we can treat up to seventeen million gallons. So we have room to grow there. Our C B O D is carbonaceous biological oxygen demand. Again, you can see right now, we we do about a ninety-eight percent removal of that. And and these are our permitted figures, our permitted parameters here on the right, which is C C B O D. T S S is total suspended solids, how the clarity of the water, that's a that's a permit parameter, and we have ninety-eight percent removal there. Ammonia is not good for fish and wildlife, and so we have a ninety-seven percent removal there. And fecal coliform, we're running at sixty-one mean probable number, and our permit would allow us to go up to the thousand. So it shows we're really operating the plant really, really well. This is our new permit. With the upgrade of our treatment plan, of our water reclamation plan, we have a new permit and new permits typically always get more strict. As you can do better, they want you to continue to do better. So you see our existing C B O D or carbon carbonaceous biological oxygen demand was a twenty-five milligrams per liter. Our new permit has spring, summer, winter designations or different criteria, and it kind of makes sense because the parameters you have in the winter time, the water is able to hold more oxygen. You know, have you don't have the plant and algae growth as much in the winter time. The summertime, the fish are out or more more active. You do, they do compete with the algae for the oxygen in the water. You might have people playing in the water, and so the the limits get more strict in the summertime. But as an example, we went for many years being happy at twenty-five milligrams per liter. And now in the summertime, we're going to have to go down to eight. So this is a significant increase in our permit levels. The total suspended solids at thirty, we've marched along now in the summertime, they have to reduce it to ten. Ammonia, which is also looking at nitrogen, four point one milligrams per liter down to one point six. And fecal coliform, they're going to change that and made us do E K O I. And again, those those things go down by, that's like an eighty percent decrease from the winter to the summer. And the D O, which is dissolved oxygen, again, for the aquatic life, we have to increase the dissolved oxygen in the stream to six point five milligrams per liter. And so our new permit, that's why I have it at the bottom here. Permits get different designations. Before, we were warm water aquatic. So we just had to make sure the water was clean enough to to preserve and promote the warm order fish. Now it's primary body contact and recreational, which means that you're able to play in the effluent. Can't drink it yet, but you can you can play it and have it all over you. We also had to switch to seven-day-a-week testing. So we used to test a lot of these parameters five days a week. And now we have to do these tests every day of the week. Part of the fee you pay when you pay your your sewer fee or your water reclamation fee is to pay for sewer line maintenance. Our sewer line maintenance, yeah, water line maintenance on one side, sewer line maintenance similarly maintains over two five hundred and four, five hundred and twenty miles of sewer lines, twelve thousand manholes. And we clean one point four million feet of sewer line each year. So that means our crews will be in your backyard or in your front yard or cleaning in your neighborhood at least once every two and a half, there are two to three years, cleaning out the sewer lines to make sure they flow. And and the reason that is really important is the next line. This is over the last twenty years, we reduced any sanitary sewer overflows by ninety percent, which is really, really phenomenal. Kim, you want to touch on the rates?
Sure, Ken. Here in this graphic, we compare the sewer rates of the sixteen cities, and we see that Norman's rate or rates are significantly lower than most of the other cities. Only one of the city has lower rates, and that's Lawton. And so anyway, Norman's rates are about thirty percent lower than the average rate in this comparison for the ten thousand gallons of sewer processing.
And so that's our current rate is was changed in two thousand thirteen. So this will be eight years since that rate has changed. And it's it's a five-dollar base fee and two dollars and thirty cents per thousand. Let's see. We have an ending balance of three million dollars, and it looks like, again, a scary thing is we have an ending fund balance in twenty-one of three hundred thousand dollars. So that you went through three million balance to three hundred thousand dollar balance, and that's not, that's not usable. So we'll explain why that that is where it is. So the major projects is we have our pilot project for IPR, which is our indirect public reuse. That's a multi-year project. So we have anticipate spending one point eight million dollars this year, and you look below, it's another one point four million dollars. The line maintenance building, remember, we shared that with the water fund line maintenance. The water side was going to pay for one point six million, and the wastewater side pays for one six, one point six million. Provide new area for our line maintenance crews be across the street from the water treatment plant. We want to buy some land next to the water reclamation facility, again, to set up a buffer. It wouldn't, it's not going to be, we're going to share that with the sanitation division. So it's not going to be as expensive as three hundred forty thousand dollars, but we're sharing it with the sanitation division. We're going to build a storage building that they don't have there. Again, we spent five years almost building and upgrading the water reclamation facility, having new pieces of equipment, having air scrubbers to reduce the odor control and introducing UV disinfection. And so it's like building a house without a garage. So after we built all this new stuff, we have five generators now to keep the plant running and power outages. Essentially, we need a storage building to house pumps and and equipment. The major projects coming up in twenty-one and this year's budget coming forward, again, is more part of the the pilot project. And here's the two big items. Again, when I said we're reducing our budget down to three hundred thousand dollars as a as a fund balance, which is not acceptable. It's because of these two big projects. One is a centrifuge replacement, two and a half million dollars. We could probably sell a bond and spread that over three years or maybe a little bit more. So instead of a two point five million dollar hit to your budget, it would be like a million dollar hit, which is a lot more palatable. And the main control building renovation, we have a brand new, not brand new, we have a renovated water reclamation facility. We're starting an IPR project, which is indirect public reuse. We really need to upgrade the control building and the laboratory. Next year, we'll just spend three hundred fifty thousand dollars looking into researching what the lab would, what a what a state-of-the-art laboratory looks like. And we'll go on some trips to to look at some, but the project will be about three point million dollars, which will be the next year. The sewer maintenance fund is really something that's that's very, very enviable from other cities. We have a five-dollar per month fee from our customers. It's included in the water reclamation rates that you saw where we're still very, very low. And it's dedicated to maintenance of sewer sewer lines. It can't be used for anything else, and it's a pay-as-you-go basis. So we can't borrow against it. We just have to use it on a yearly basis to replace sewer lines. That's how we reduced our sanitary sewers by over ninety percent, just a continual replacement. Start with the oldest part of town first and and just keep going through. And since two thousand one, when it was initiated, we've replaced over four hundred thousand feet of sewer lines in Norman. Again, that's really enviable from other cities. There's an example here, some of the projects that we've done or the sewer mine we want to do with our sewer maintenance fund. And the the two maps you see are what we do, and we do a maintenance, S S N P is sewer maintenance plan seventeen. Two point three million dollars will go in and and replace all the sewer lines in the whole neighborhood. So you get a lot more bang for your buck. The contractor sets up in the neighborhood and just goes from one end to the other and places replaces all the sewer lines. And they're usually clay pipe, things of that nature, old manholes. And so that's really, really efficient way of doing it, and it cleans up the whole neighborhood. So you don't have to be back there for another fifty years or so. Our new development excise tax is our franchise or excise tax on sewer connections. You can see that we hit just about our all-time low this year, our twenty twenty estimate is like one point one million dollars. That's about as low as we've ever had. Next year, we're anticipating a little bit higher, about one point four million dollars. And the blue is residential, the red is commercial. That's just because we're not growing as much as we anticipated. The new development excise tax, again, that's earmarked just to pay for new things for new customers or to increase the size. That's why we can split that with some of our maintenance projects. As example, the Summit Valley Interceptor, that's a maintenance project. But because we're increasing the size of the interceptor because of new customers, we can use money from our development excise tax along with our maintenance fees. So we have those three projects in the works now. And we end up with our total utility bill. So Kim, you want to, and this is all the cities that and some of them have stormwater fees, and like us, we do not, but this is a total.
That's that's true. And you can see here, we have the lowest utility rates on our total utility bill compared to these other fifteen cities. And I think this might be slightly different than the presentation that went out in the packet because I it took a little bit for me to hear back from Ardmore, but they did have a water rate increase which pushed them up above our rates for the total bill. And twelve of these cities do have a monthly stormwater fee ranging from two dollars and forty-two cents a month to eight dollars and thirty-five cents a month. But four of those cities, including Norman, do not have stormwater fees, and we're still coming in as the lowest total utility bill here. So I think that's interesting to know.
And so that's where we end.
Now, we have a few questions that have come up throughout the presentation, and we'll start with Councilmember Holman.
All right. Thank you. So let's see, starting at the beginning, I guess, so we're looking at a potential request for a water rate increase in two thousand twenty-one. And you mentioned January. My thoughts just initially on that would be that we have city council elections in February. So it would probably, in my opinion, maybe make sense to shoot for that date instead of having back-to-back elections. And let's see. I appreciate talking about the Oklahoma City and their rate. Us being in a situation where we vote on utility rate increases, from what I've always understood, cities like Oklahoma City, they just standard about five percent a year. And so that's when we have to buy water. We are seeing that. And would you mind talking briefly about the the Dell City water line? So we're paying for part of it. What exactly are we benefiting from that? And I understand that Dell City and Midwest City have likely contributed to infrastructure has benefited Norman as well. So you might just touch on that briefly.
Sure, that's that's a hard one to comprehend, but the the Bureau of Reclamation built the reservoir and all the conveyance lines that went from the 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 pumping station to Norman and to Midwest City and to Dell City. The dam, the the pumping systems, the suctions and all that stuff. And so all three cities are are linked forever. Paying the shared cost of all that infrastructure, just as we paid off the mortgage. That was our share to pay off the mortgage. And so we use about forty-three percent of the water, and so we pay forty-three percent of any infrastructure projects. It's it's difficult to stomach a little bit, I guess, you know, but there you get a a new water line replacement. But we're obligated to pay forty-three percent of it.
Okay, appreciate the explanation. The Parsons Street Water Line, what is the scope of that project? As in, is it from Elm Street to Pickard or? And when do we expect that might happen? I might have missed that.
Well, I'll let Chris Mattingly, he's a project engineer. We've we've done half of that. So he he already.
Yeah.
It's in the subdivision.
Yeah. So the Parsons, we did the first half of it, and we were going, we were scheduled to do the second half closer to the university this May. The COVID and yeah, knowingness if the graduation was going to resume or when, we we are going to set it back one year and try to attempt that next May, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. I appreciate that. The Porter Avenue Water and Sewer Line Replacement, has the budget for that from the utility standpoint been adjusted to? Because the first presentation that we had a few months ago was just Robinson to Gray. We've since clarified that the project actually is Alameda to Robinson. And so has that been adjusted yet? As far as doing the water line replacements from Alameda to Gray Street as part of that project as well?
No, it has not. That's a good point. We we looked at, again, this was the water line replacement for Porter Avenue was not high on our list, but we want to take advantage of Public Works doing, you know, a new road and sidewalk. And so we're going to jump in there and replace what we think we need to replace. I mean, if if it was really low on the on our list of replacements, we wouldn't be, we just leave it there and and let it be. But if, you know, if it's something that we're going to have to replace in the next five years or something like that, we'll move it forward and and go ahead and try to budget it in there to do, because we don't want to, you know, have a water line break in a one of the street that's three years old.
Absolutely.
Happen, but that's what we're trying to do.
Yes, I would definitely encourage us to figure out if we're going to do that for the that part of Porter and where we might find funding for that portion. Thank you. The I don't know how much you'd want to talk about it. There are not much details, and I only asked you about it yesterday, but the the Lindsay Street Water Tower, since we're talking about water towers today. We talked briefly about its potential future, some things we can use it for, partnering, maybe stuff like that.
Sure. The Lindsay Street Water Tower is an anomaly because it's a little bit low. And so it was in service for a number of years, and we realized it didn't, it didn't fluctuate. And so that's not good for water. In other words, it was lower than our normal pressures, so it always stayed full. And where that might sound good, that's not good for water in a water tank. You like it to go up and down during peak use. You want it to drain and then fill it back up to make sure the water is fresh. So it has not been used. So it has not been used for a number of years. We've looked at the master plan when we did our, excuse me, our water supply, our strategic water supply. That was listed as possibly being used for in for non potable water. It is an old tank. Excuse me, the last time it was painted, it did have lead paint. And so if we were to use it for potable water, it would take a complete sandblasting down to bare metal. But if you use it for non potable, like if we used it to put our non potable water and then use that water to perhaps irrigate Reeves Park or for some other use, it would be less expensive to paint. But it does need to be painted. We were thinking of even taking it down since it's not used. So it's it's still not confirmed what we're going to do with it yet. But if we can work out, if the city manager has a has a ability to work out a deal with the university and they pay for a part of it to be painted, that would be wonderful. It's a good avenue as it as you enter Lindsay there, looking towards the university. To have a big OU sticker on it, be okay with us.
I appreciate that. For my colleagues, the reason why I brought that up is that, and I grew up really close to the area of Lindsay and Classon. And that water tower has really been an iconic piece of my lifetime in Norman. And it does look different than all the modern towers. And it sits on top of a hill, right at the railroad tracks as you're driving towards campus or away from it. And you can see it, especially on East Lindsay for a couple of miles away. And so I've known it hasn't been in use for a couple of years. And so I asked him what the, if we had any plans for it and even what the process might be for making it even a historical structure. But I was really excited to hear about the potential of it being used for non potable water and irrigation purposes at Reeves Park, since we do plan to use Reeves Park even more intensely in the in the future than we have before. So and partnering with OU to, you know, help get it repainted and maybe putting OU symbol on one side and Norman on the other. I'm not sure, but I'm very excited about that. I I really hope we are able to preserve that structure and keep it there for a long time. So I appreciate that answer. I was wondering about the Boyd Street Tower, though, because I know just it was completely repainted just within this last decade, if I recall. I remember watching, driving by and seeing him do it. So what is the lifetime on having to completely repaint a water tower like this?
So a lifetime is can either from ten years to fifteen years. One of the other things you're going to do with Boyd, first on the list would be to paint, really, or look at the Cascade Tower. The underbelly of it where it gets, because it's, it contains water during the summertime. It gets condensation and it gets moldy and it looks nasty. And then the condensation, the mold actually eats into the the coating or the paint. So that would be, we're not sure if we have to paint the whole thing or just the bowl. And then on the Boyd Street Tower, there's a piece of the puzzle that is, as I mentioned with the Lindsay Tower, we need to mix that water better. Rather than just put the water in a tank. And if you put water, if there's only one pipe, the water comes in the bottom. And then the new, when you need it, it comes out the bottom and the water on the top of the tank stays stagnant. And so we need a better mixing facility inside the tank. So that's part of the cost is we repaint it and we'd have to add that mixing chamber inside too.
Okay, I appreciate that. The well filled blending water storage part that you mentioned, finance that correctly. Is that part of the groundwater treatment plant? It's part of the long range water treat or water master plan or twenty sixty?
Yes, exactly. We regulations continue to get tighter. As I said, you know, when we finish these nine wells, that Chris is the project manager for, we'll have forty wells working. And if regulations, whether it's chromium or it's vanadium or it's it's a radionuclides or something, something's going to keep getting tighter, where eventually we're going to have to start treating well water. And so be silly to try to put up forty different treatment plants. So this would have one common plant, one place. But before we even have to treat it, it'd be really good or advantageous to have a blending point. So you can mix the wells that are really good with the wells that are not so good and be able to use all the water.
Wonderful, yeah, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. I'm excited about the potential of a groundwater treatment plant that's dedicated to treating well water. Because I agree, we're going to be relying on that a lot more in the future in order to maintain our water independence from OKC and others. So thank you for that. Southeast Norman Water Tower, do we have a location for that already? Do we have land? Are we looking at having to buy land? Is that part of, and would land purchase be part of that cost?
Land purchase would have to be part of that cost because we do not have a land that we do not have a location for. That was part of our modeling, you know, and sometimes you do these long range plans. And at the time, you think, well, we don't have any money for it. But it's important to look, especially with with utilities where the infrastructure is is so expensive. You have to look more than five years or two years in the future. You have to look ten and fifteen and twenty and things like that. And so it was noticed that that area is growing, the southeast area. Possibly Dustin's Landing, things of things might be coming in there. And so that was an area that we could use a water tower to maintain pressures in the future. So it's something that's it's coming up on the radar more as as we grow. But it's something we have to look at and we do not have a specific location. A lot of times when you need the water tower, it's you don't need it at this crossroads. You need it within, you know, a mile radius of something or other, just to make sure you can maintain pressures in that area.
Thank you. I I don't know, I know that the developers of Dustin Landing already are donating land for a fire station for us. But maybe since it's such a large development, maybe they'd be open to a donation for land for water tower. Since higher water pressure, at least if I was looking for a house, high water pressure and shower is one of the top most important things to me. So maybe that could be a benefit to selling houses down there, I'm not sure. But maybe they'd be willing to work with us on some land down there anyway. The recycling participation rate, from everything we can tell, the numbers are staying okay, even though less things are allowed now.
Yeah, we're we still have a very good group of customers that want to recycle. They were very disappointed in removing glass from the from the equation. But the commodity price has just been terrible. I mean, a lot of recyclers have closed down completely. We did see a little bit of uptick in cardboard. Carbon is just, I shouldn't go on and on, take everybody's dead. Cardboard was down to a low of ten dollars a ton. Several years ago, it was up to a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty dollars a ton. So it's you, the ten dollars a ton, you take a big front end loader, commercial truck. You drive around to our commercial, our drop off centers. You take about six hours to collect maybe eight tons of cardboard to drive it up to Oklahoma City to get eight bucks, eighty, eighty dollars. I mean, it's it's not working out. So we're looking forward to having those recycling, the commodity prices go back up.
That's interesting. Yeah, um, yeah, I'm interested to see how that continues to track. I appreciate the information. Also interested to, you know, the last rate increase for sanitation being in twenty eleven. You don't expect that we need one anytime soon, that's very refreshing. So I think that probably reflects pretty good budget management on your staff's part. So I appreciate that. And the landfill tipping fees, interest in that because when I toured the Batliner Facility with Republic, I think two years ago with Mayor Miller, they had, if I remember correctly, the manager indicated to us that that the landfill at I forty and I thirty five there was had about a twenty year lifespan left in it. And that got me thinking about what the future plans, twenty years is not that long in a municipal government setting. So I don't know if that's something we're like on our own, we have to go search for another one or if there's a consorted effort, if that's something we need to even start planning for now.
Well, that landfill is always looking at trying to expand itself to buy land adjacent to it to keep its life going. So but there are other landfills available, that one's convenient. So in in the garbage industry, it's it's really time and labor. And so time is an important piece. So if you get something closer, it's worth something to you, just to reduce your travel time to get to it and back. So there are other landfills that, so it's not like we'll run out of places to put garbage. It's just a matter of what the cost might be.
Appreciate that. That's definitely something I think future city councils need to keep in mind as we go forward. The Household Hazardous Waste Facility, I'm really excited about that, actually. I get a lot of questions about from people asking what to do with stuff like that. And telling them, you know, we have an event once a year. You know, somebody messaged you as of January about it, tell them to wait till October. So I think having a year round facility like that would be extremely beneficial for Norman and Norman residents. So I I fully support going forward to try to make that a reality. And the last wastewater rate increase you mentioned was in twenty thirteen. I didn't see anything about expecting another one anytime soon either. Is that correct?
That's correct. For the foreseeable future, the the next big piece would be to look at our indirect potable reuse pilot project. That's a three year project to see how we're going to have to treat the water to make it usable again. And then the council and or as trustees of the utilities, you we would start to look at the 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 equipment and the cost of treating that water to make it usable into Lake Thunderburg. Would that be part of the water treatment plant? Because it becomes treatable water, potable water essentially? Or would that be part of the wastewater side to get dispose of the water? So there might be a shared cost of some of that equipment. But the water reclamation facility, again, like the sanitation facility, we owe it to our our operators, our managers down there that have done an excellent job. And so other than buying new equipment or treating it differently, I think we're in really good shape.
Thank you, Ken, appreciate that. Last thing for me is just want to give a shout out to my good friend from middle school and high school. He was featured in one of the slides because he's a lab technician at the water reclamation plant. So hey, David, I hope you and family are doing well. Norman guy, born and raised here, now been working for the city for several years and works in maybe the most important facility in our city and in the lab down there. So thanks, everybody, I appreciate it, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, just to give everybody heads up, there are everybody's hands up just about. So it I'm taking these in the order that they were raised. So just wanted to, don't get discouraged. And next will be Councilmember Beerman.
So I I had a couple of questions, I'm thankful that I jotted them down. The first one is about the water line replacement project on Robinson. It was very, very early this year. The county had been making some overtures about some kind of an agreement with the water line replacement as it runs through the fairground. Did anything ever come of that?
Well, we we've talked to them. They, as you know, they want to redo some of that fairgrounds, which is north of Robinson Street. So one way of looking at it would save us money to use to work with them to put our new water line east, west in the fairground, in in the county property essentially that runs there. But it's going to cost us more water money to get from Robinson Street up to the fairgrounds on the east side and then back from the fairgrounds on the west side back to Robinson Street. So we tried to work with them and see what their timeline looks like. It doesn't look like it's going to work out, but we're still open to that conversation. Otherwise, we'll just have to go down and and, you know, tear out the sidewalk on Robinson Street. But it's it's a balance between, you know, giving several hundred more feet to go north to make a cheaper line to then several hundred feet south or just go straight down Robinson.
Right, yeah, and the one, the one part that really interested me the most was the lack of disruption to the street and the sidewalk. Is that, you know, they're already doing a lot of work behind the fairgrounds. So, you know, that work along that section of Robinson then wouldn't impact the street maybe as much or the sidewalk. So but, you know, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that the talks were ongoing because I know that they're doing work like now. So I'm glad that you've been in touch with them. If the it doesn't, if it doesn't work out, then it doesn't work out. But I'm glad that you guys are are talking to them. And then the second, it's more of a, more of a just a point than a question. As it relates to sanitation and recycling, I too have gotten a lot of questions and a lot of frustration about the changes in recycling, which is just the way of the world. And as I, as I say, it's also one of the consequences of privatizing services. We don't get to tell a private company what to do. We might be able to take whatever we want in sanitation and make our own decisions. We don't get to do that with recycling. And I've had a couple of conversations with fellow council members. I think I might have had a short conversation in passing, both with you, Ken, and with Daryl about looking to the future and what the future of our waste management is going to be. Because as we all know, China doesn't, China doesn't want our recycling. And that's one of the reasons why it was a profitable industry and and we were able to get the participation that we got. One of the newest trends that has yet to really break into the United States, although there are a couple of cities, one in Pennsylvania that's doing it, is full incineration and zero emissions incineration. And that replaces recycling and sanitation. And so one of the things that I was hoping to have in one of one of my oversight meetings that has now been pushed to God knows when, was starting the discussion about investigating an incineration facility versus what we're currently expending for sanitation and recycling. A lot of data collection that goes into that, what a bond issue would look like in terms of cost if we're replacing the cost that we're paying for sanitation and for recycling. But I think this is something that we're going to have to look at long term. We we all know that the current way we do things is the best we can do for now. But landfills are not a long term sustainable solution. Sending our recycling overseas is obviously not a sustainable solution because it's no longer profitable. So this is probably in the five to ten year plan. But I I do think that it's something that's worth talking about sooner rather than later and getting a sense of what it would cost and how valuable it would be for our community. So since we're talking enterprise funds, I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Your honor, this is Daryl, just a quick note. I am working on an opportunity to bring that technology in, maybe on a pilot scale.
Of course you are, Daryl, of course.
And a mechanism to finance it with private sector dollars. But the article you found was absolutely dead on. Like the challenges we face in looking at alternative energy solutions because the price of our current electricity is so darn cheap. It's it's similar, when we pay twenty dollars a ton to tip it at the landfill, you're thinking, honestly, the most cost effective solution is just bury everything. Not sustainable, as you know, Ken mentioned, at some point, your landfill gets full. And, you know, they would like to expand. And at a point, you recognize we do run out of places to bury our garbage. But the opportunity to look at garbage as a fuel source, it's a wonderful thing. So the article you found was was absolutely on point. And there are some emerging technologies that are amazingly clean and could result in long term changes in how we package. Because when we look at what's in our, in our, you know, waste stream, packaging material makes up the lion's share of what everybody's dumping in their trash cans. So we will be bringing those conversations back to you, hopefully in the not too distant future.
I really appreciate it, Daryl, thank you so much. That's all I've got.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Carter.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Excellent presentation, Ken. Just two comments, I would be on my farewell tour again, so I won't be around to vote on this. But would definitely be in favor and encourage the right vote in January. I would also encourage council to look at a three dollar stormwater utility again. I think a flat utility three dollar fee would be something that would fly and relieve some of the general pressure there a little bit. And just a point of interest is that just across the river to the south in Goldsby, the hookup to the water is thirty three hundred dollars hookup fee. So I think if you start looking at hookup fees, you're going to hear that. Hookup fee. So I think if you start looking at hookup fees, you're going to hear that, you know, the same old same old. But uh, they're building houses like crazy in McLean County and paying thirty three hundred to hook up the water. And that's not sewer. It's just water. Then you gotta spend ten thousand dollars on a septic tank or an aeration system. So that, and then my only other question is, hey, how is the guy that fell asleep in the dumpster and then they got dumped into the sanitation truck? How's that guy doing?
Uh, my understanding is he actually did uh recover well. Um, and there were varying stories about why he was where he was. Uh, but they could not tie him directly to any nefarious activities.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Hey, Councilmember, Councilmember Petra.
Hi, thank you for the presentation as well. And I'm excited, uh, Mr. Pyle to hear uh more about that trash as fuel. Presentation that'll be coming to us soon. Um, so I had a few questions and I got a couple of comments. And so uh, like the others, I've just kind of taken notes along the way. So I may be jumping around a little bit, but um. Per the one point one million for the Dell City um water line, um. It was my understanding, and I slept since then, but um, aren't we digging new wells right now so that we won't need to buy? Oklahoma City and Dell City water anymore?
Well, we share the reservoir with Midwest City, Dell City and us. And so we're, we're partners forever with those three. Uh, the infrastructure that goes into whether it's a Dell City pipeline or a pumping system, something like that, the three cities are going to pay for that. The, the piece of buying Oklahoma City water is that we do want to get off of that. Um, it's, it's wonderful that they allow us to do it. It's great that it's an option for us to do. But you're right, uh, long term is we want to get away from that. We're drilling the, the new wells that we have now. Um, we have six under completion of nine. Uh, when they get all up and running and we see how much water they produce. Perhaps then will be a good time for us to get off of or reduce the usage of Oklahoma City water. Well, that's, that's the goal. And eventually, obviously with IPR indirect potable reuse, we wouldn't need them at all.
Okay, so six of the nine are coming online this year?
Six of the nine have been drilled and waiting water quality tests, but then you have to connect the pipeline to get us. So probably by the end of the year, there'll be some of those will be online. Yes.
Okay, so do we think that we'll know by a year from now budget year, whether or not we would need to be signing up for another year of Oklahoma City water?
Yeah, that would probably be a good, a good timeline.
Okay, and so I confused the two issues and I appreciate you setting that straight. So on the original um question with the one point one million for Dell City. Um, that has to do with the amount of load that we're pulling from the reservoir? Is that what I'm assuming the population?
One, one million wasn't for Dell City. That one point one million was uh central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District. That's the management group that looks at the reservoir and the, and you're right, it is our portion of what we're using out of the lake. Our electrical costs are our fee for the maintenance of the intake structures and the pumps and the dam itself, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you for that. Um. You brought up the chromium six and I, well, it, you said, um. I didn't understand whether or not the levels were at one hundred parts per billion or if that's the um cannot exceed.
Yeah, I probably didn't take the time to explain that clear clearly. Uh, the, the MCL maximum contaminant level now by EPA is a hundred parts per billion. We, our wells are anywhere from twenty to eighty parts per billions or well under that maximum contaminant level. However, uh, there's always those that like a lower number is better. And so whether it's science based or not. They have thrown out reducing the chromium level um to a, to a number that's lower. And like I said, our wells are are forty to eighty or some, maybe twenty to eighty. Uh, so we're well below the limit now. But if they're to do something which is not out of the question, something that I would think is silly, reduce the level to ten, we're going to have to treat all our wells. If the, if the new level is ten parts per billion, you know, or if they picked fifty, we'd have to treat some of the wells. And again, that would be hard to say, well, we're going to put up, we have forty wells, maybe operating at that time to to treat twenty of them or to treat fifteen of them. It'd be better to blend it all in one location and have a treatment plant at one spot.
Okay, so for the public that might be listening to this, um, the chromium six problems that we had had. In the not too distant past, um, is it safe to say that those issues are behind us?
Um, we didn't really have chromium six problems. Our wells haven't changed. The uh Environmental Working Group, EWG, decided upon themselves that they want, they thought a lower number would be better. And so they kind of put a scare out to everybody saying, well, a hundred parts per billion is way too high. It should be lower. EPA has looked at the chromium issue three times now um and said that the, the, a safe. Level is at a hundred. They haven't changed it. Um, so we have always been in compliance with the chromium rules. It was just something that might happen in the future. And similar, you know, regulations change. Like I said, even on our water reclamation side, you know, we have pretty clean water that we're discharging to the river. But it, they, the regulation just with a new permit makes it even cleaner. So the more we learn about science and technology, the better we can treat things, the more regulations are going to keep changing. So as we're just being prepared.
Yeah, I guess what I was referring to was, um, I believe it was um NPR maybe. That maybe about five years ago put out a um story and Norman was called out. In the United States for having extremely high comparatively speaking chromium six levels. And so that it kind of, it, it made headlines here as well. And uh, so I know what I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm getting at here. Is I'm wondering if our levels today are the same as they were during that study. That we were, got the unfortunate recognition from.
Yes, and that was, that was the Environmental Working Group. They um. This, again, you look at the, we have over three thousand water systems in just Oklahoma. So you think of how many hundreds of thousands of water systems there be in the United States. They took a sample of about forty water systems and said that of those forty water systems, we had the highest chromium level. We were still well below the EPA required amount, but they thought it should have been lower. And so it kind of, it was a, a sensational article. It, I think it made us look bad unnecessarily. Because we were meeting and we have always met EPA regulations. They think it should be a lower number, but it hasn't panned out. As far as having a lower number yet. So we do have the same, same water qualities we had when that issue was done. But meets everything we're supposed to meet.
Okay. Um. Okay, so with respect to the election talk, um, I uh. On the one hand, agree with council member Holman that if the voters are going to have to go to the polls in February for council member. Um. Elections that, that seems to make more sense than a January and February, at least save the thirty five thousand or whatever it is. But by the same token, it, it also makes me kind of circle back around to, we're about to, we're discussing sending voters. To the polls for Norman forward. And I have um. A lot of reservations in my gut about, you know, economic conditions right now and um. Whether or not we're putting our wants before our needs, um, because I'm not so sure, you know, I mean, it's. I don't know. I just think that there's something that council members need to really be cognizant of, that you could only ask for so much. And that when we ask for it, um, voter fatigue is a real thing, but so is economic conditions. So um, that's all I have to say about the election stuff, but it just, hopefully people will be thinking about that. Um, how much was the base commercial rate for water? I got the residential rate at six dollars. I didn't get the base commercial rate.
I believe the commercial rate is the same, the base rate.
Okay. On the slide. Um. I was glad to hear about the bonds being paid off early. Congratulations. That's really um exciting and responsible and we appreciate that. Um. And then I wondered how much the land, how much land we would be purchasing at the three hundred and fifty thousand that was the adjacent to the compost facility. How much, how many acres?
Um. I'm not sure how I'm supposed to talk about things that are in process. It was, it's the land around between the compost facility and the water reclamation facility. We're still in the process of seeing how much that will cost. And it's about twenty acres. But that's all probably comfortable saying because we don't have an agreement. We don't have a contract yet.
Okay, no worries. Um. Okay, so and then the other exciting stuff about the pilot study on the reuse again, uh, coming up in twenty twenty one. It's kind of back to my original question is, do we have maybe an ETA if all things go well? Um, when that could come online, where it's actual use?
Yeah, no, I, I don't. There's um, there's a whole presentation. I just uh met with our citizens advisory council to update them. It's really a s- a six step process from our pilot project to doing a protocol to getting DEQs okay on it. To then doing a TMDL, which is total maximum daily load for the reservoir to make sure that now we know what our quality is. Uh, what that will do with the reservoir. Uh, so and then from the reservoir, then we have to get approval from OWRB. So it's, it's a, it's a many year process. But um, you know, every journey starts with one step. And and getting the pilot project up and running is is a, is a major, major, major step.
Yeah, I was trying to go off of memory and I probably could go back through this look and figure out from the last time. I don't know, six or eight months ago when you talked to us about it. Um, if we were just. Ballparking in the most optimistic light, would you say maybe three years?
Our pilot project is, is almost three years long just to test out everything. And if, if and when, if and when that becomes successful, it would probably be another three to five years after that. To go through the process to get a TMDL, which is again, it's a, it's a seasonal thing. So you have to do through several seasons in a reservoir. Um, to see how it reacts. And so it's, I'd love it to be faster. I really, really would.
No, I, I'm actually really glad that we're um in front of the curve on this. We're the only ones, my understanding. Are we still the only ones that are even attempting this in Oklahoma? So.
Absolutely. And that's why I was so, I'm so glad you brought that up. I was so hugely proud of us getting a seven hundred thousand dollar grant. From the Bureau of Reclamation. They only gave five research grants out. Uh, four of them went to California. We're the only central United States, one that, the central United States municipality that got one. But it shows that they are looking at our technology that we want to use very, very, very seriously. They are acknowledging on a federal level. That that this could be the answer to water sustainability for many, many utilities in the central states. That don't have a, an ocean to discharge to.
Yeah, congratulations. That really makes me proud. And I know it does the other council members as well. Um. Okay, uh, new development excise tax. Um, when was council, I know that there was a um. I don't know if it was an ordinance that was passed or what, but that we were supposed to meet periodically. And I don't remember if it was once a year um to discuss connection fees. And since I've been on council, we haven't met. So I'm trying to understand. Maybe I think the question might be for Brenda actually, but if maybe we could schedule for that to happen in June, um. I would like to hear.
That would be part of looking at the water rates. You want to look at it as a, as a combined thing. You don't want to look at connection fees. Independent of what you need for water rates. And and we did do it. The, the ordinance was, we had to look at that. Or at least the council had to re- review it every two years. So we have reviewed it at that time. Again, it's, you don't want to do one without the other. If you want to change the connection fees, you really should look at the water rates as a whole. Of, of what customers, new customers, old customers are paying and what you need to run the utility. So it's, it should be a, a, a packaged thing and and absolutely have to be part of the discussion. If we talk about uh increasing water rates, just the increasing the commodity rate. We have to have to look at the connection fees also for sure.
Okay, so do, does that go to the voters as well on connection fees?
The connection fees, I do not believe has to go to the voters. And the reason I did.
You do not. It's, it's adopted by ordinance.
Okay, um, I haven't been on council for two years. So I, I, I just know that since I've been on council, we haven't discussed it. And um, so I would just look forward to being able to understand that better. Um, and um, especially in light of what um council member Carter just spoke to. Of the thirty three hundred dollar water hookup, just in a neighboring community. And understanding what that looks like for Norman versus other areas nearby. So um, and then not, not just residential but commercial as well. And how much water do you, you know, are you take, you know, cut pipes? How much you, are you pulling on the system um compared to what the fee is? Um, so I don't know. If, if June isn't appropriate time, I just would rather it be sooner than later. Um, just to really, I know that it's been a controversial issue in the past. But um, I don't know, maybe it wouldn't be this time so much. Times change. Um.
No, it's, you're absolutely correct. That's a, it's a good time to look at that. When you need to ask for more money. You need to, to look at the, the total utility, what everybody pays. And so essentially, after this budget gets passed and we know we have a plan for what we're going to spend. That's the time we would put together saying, you know, with these projects I just explained to you, we're going to need X amount of dollars. And how the council would help determine how we come up with that, that mix of money to make sure that the utility is, is sustainable.
Okay, and then I don't got written this one down, but it just sparked my memory. And you were speaking about Destin's Landing. And I'm wondering if there, um, when council passes a whole new major housing development like that. Um, per the ordinance and zoning it out, do we um typically pass that um bill on? I remember a conversation um about how. Some members of council had wished that they had um planned for the fire department, some fire department money. Because we would be needing a new um facility, you know, to compensate for that. And so I'm wondering if we do that when it comes to. Um, water, other than just connection fees, if there's a whole brand new huge subdivision like that. Um, what we charge or is it just the same per household?
We're consistent. We don't charge one subdivision more than another. I mean, it's, it's just one. It's whatever the connection fees are and it's whether the commodity rate is, everybody in the community pays the same amount. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Sort of. I'm thinking about the, you know, if there's all new versus, okay, if a subdivision has just an empty lot. But the rest of the neighborhood has already been built out. I would think that the rest of the neighborhood had paid for the water lines to have been ran to a new subdivision. And so I'm wondering how we recoup those kinds of costs for a brand new subdivision where we haven't had to put in infrastructure.
Oh, no, you're, you're, you're correct along those lines. A subdivision puts in all the infrastructure. They put in the water lines and the sewer lines. As they do the roads and sidewalks. So that's part of the, the cost of the development is they run all the, and fire hydrants. All that's in the ground and then they donate those utility pieces to us to maintain.
Okay, and so the city doesn't have any additional overhead when it comes to. any additional overhead when it comes to then, we just flip on a switch and the water starts flowing? I mean, is that basically?
Right. The connection fees are usually are a part of how much more new water do we need to support new customers? It's connection fees are not so much for the, the fire hydrants and the pipes in the ground and the sewer lines and things of that nature. That's paid by a developer.
And so the Raftella study, it was just with respect to how much more water that we need? Or was it with respect to any sort of thing that water touches? I mean, it was a water study, but infrastructure, it was how much water or infrastructure and water?
It was, uh, how much, how much new water does a new customer require? And how much does it cost to get new water? How much does it cost to drill a new well? Or to, to get water from someplace to supply new customers? It was not for the pipes and fire hydrants and things of that nature.
Um, your honor, just a clarification, we have notes indicating that after the 10 water wells were completed, we would bring back the question on the connection fees. So on the schedule, it was just, we had a note next to it that you know, complete those capital projects on the additional water supply side, then bring back the analysis for connection fees.
Okay. And when was it? Wells would be completed?
Ken, what's our completion estimation date?
Man, I, I hate to kick the ball over to Chris. We have six wells completed out of, out of the nine, but then also part of that process is not just the holes in the ground and the wells. We have to connect it up to our distribution system. So in some cases it's several miles away. So if Chris is still around.
Yeah, we're, we're shooting for December, December of this year.
So it sounds like we're going to need to do it before then, Mr. Pyle. If he's saying that he would want a January or February election on a water rate. And he's also saying it's a holistic view of water charges versus new connection fees, then we're going to need to be bump that timeline up.
Well versed before the election date to give council plenty of time to discuss, debate, analyze and come up with the proper question for the voters. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. And so just before I go back and study up on Raftellis, just to make sure that I understand. When I'm reading that, it's basically a question of whether existing Norman residents are subsidizing new development or whether development is paying its own way with respect we need.
Yep. That's it.
And then I think I have one more question. That was with respect to recycling. I haven't, it just came to my mind while we were talking about it and I haven't been over there to see, but did we ever get the main transfer station or whatever recycled bins out at Ruby Grant? We had talked about replacing the West Side recycle bins, the drop off station. That was at
Oh, at Hobby Lobby.
Lobby. Yeah. And we discussed potentially giving the West Siders an area at Ruby Grant.
No, we have not moved forward on that. We were looking at a place more towards where Westwood Golf course was. We, but again, right now with recycling commodity rates, we're losing money at every one of our drop off centers. And so I wasn't in a big hurry to make another one. That made sense. Just from the standpoint of keeping the sanitation fund whole. Uh, if you're losing money on three of them, it doesn't make sense to make another one at this point in time. But we do have a location, but it is more towards Westwood. That's so it's on the east side of the highway. But we'd be happy to entertain any place to, to find one.
Well, I know that, you know, my rural residents out here have never had recycling curbside. And I know that Sarita's rural Ward five have never had recycling curbside either. But even with On City Trash out here, they don't have it. And so that had been an exciting thought for my guys out here. So if we can continue to look at replacing that, even if we're having to pick up some of that bill, I think it's better than it going, taking forever to break down in a landfill somewhere. More than just the dollars and cents business side of it. It's trying to leave a clean footprint. So that's all I have. I really appreciate you and the discussion.
Okay. We have council member Scanlon next.
Ken, my first question was going to be about the potable water reclamation. You've talked to some of it in answer to others' questions. As I recall, and you're basically the, the answer is that it's, we're, we're multiple years away, three years to complete the pilot project and then we go from there. But as I recall, because the water is taken back ultimately to Thunderbird. And I recall the kickoff breakfast, if you will, when the project was, was celebrated. That we're not the only ones involved. Yes, it's our facility at the reclamation center, but, but more than just Norman is involved. So I wonder out loud, looking forward to the cost of all of this happiness, will we involve Dell City and Midwest City and any cost sharing that goes into this, the actual mechanization of, of this, this pilot project?
Well, that's a, that's a great question and we're the ones that need the water. And so we'll be the ones that treat the water to put it into the reservoir. And so initially, the way we look at it now, Dell City, New West City does not need additional water. So they would not be obligated to pay for additional treatment. If we put water into the reservoir and have more available for them to use and they wish to use it, then they would pay on a, on a same thing as a water use fee, you know, a dollars per, or a cents per thousand gallons. But at this time, that was one of the pieces that scared them the most, them as, as the Dell City, Midwest City. To think that they would be forced in to help pay for our water supply. So that, that was really, really clear that if, if we're the ones that need it, we're the ones that will pay for it. If they need it in the future, then they will help pay for what they use.
Okay. One comment about the reclamation center and you alluded to it during the, the course of your presentation. And that's the need to expand the laboratory. As you know, I spent some time out there looking at that laboratory. And, and there's no question in my mind that we're currently, it's much inadequate to current need, much less what things will expand into the future. And I know we've exchanged emails on, on the what's in the budget now and projected later, but I just have to make the comment that it's not just lab space, it's lab equipment. And I expect that that will be something we'll talk about in the future. I want to digress. Council member Beerman brought up incineration as a possible solution to, to sanitation problems. And you indicated it's not a problem now. But, but then city manager Pyle mentioned, and he and I have talked about this as well, the notion of incineration, but to a purpose. And that, that might be to generate small amounts of electricity that could help power things like the water reclamation plant. And I guess there's also discussion of some solar arrays that might do the same. But I'd just like to hear a comment probably from Daryl about, about that. Am I am I all wet or did I understand correctly?
You are absolutely on target. The ability through a, a process known as pyrolysis to convert municipal solid waste into steam to turn a turbine and then recapture some heat through cogeneration is what that thing would look like. And it would all take place, you know, inside of a, a new metal building out there and, and something not too large of a footprint. And we know we can consume heat at the wastewater treatment plant. And of course, we've got our transfer station nearby with the land acquisition that Mr. Kaminsky is working on. It rounds out a nice piece of property that the city would own and provide us with that real estate, the opportunity we would need to facilitate it. Also looking at solar solutions, I hope to be able to bring you a snapshot of first meeting in June, based on some statutes available to us here in the state of Oklahoma, where we can get that done with private sector investment. So not having to break the budget or issue debt to start our investment in renewable and sustainable energy sources to operate our two biggest facilities in terms of energy consumption, water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant.
And, and a part of the discussion we had, I think, was that you indicated that private industry is, is eager to participate in these kinds of things in part because there were pretty neat federal subsidies involved that would help entice them to help us.
It's the beauty of the, the, that part of the private sector. They have access to tax credits. They also pay taxes and we're exempt. So we, if, if we build it on our own, we lose out on the opportunity to buy down the cost of those assets, which means it actually costs us more. And I sent to the city attorney for her review, the statutes, the Oklahoma version of the statutes I was able to operate under in California. And I was fortunate to stumble across them accidentally. And I'd been looking for them intentionally for quite a while with no success. And then I stumbled across them accidentally. And lo and behold, it was exactly what I was hoping to find. So the city attorney is reviewing those statutes right now. And once we are comfortable that we understand exactly how that environment works for us here in Oklahoma, I think we'll be able to advance a couple of projects that should be very exciting and right in councils. A goal and objective to advance our solar and alternative energy opportunities here in Norman.
You do good work. I'm going to open Pandora's box. Actually, I'm, I didn't, I didn't open this box. Council member Carter did with his maybe throwaway line about the stormwater fee. But Pandora's box to me is a roles and missions issue. I, I know from having participated in the stormwater committee, I know that there's a shopping list of needs in terms of, of personnel and equipment that we lag in, in treating current stormwater problems. And this has nothing to do with capital projects. This is the, the personnel and equipment to maintain our, our infrastructure. We work as best we can. We beg, borrow and steal. Our funds are inadequate to need. He mentioned a stormwater fee. Roles and missions, of course, i- i- is because at the moment stormwater is under public works and we're talking utilities here. But a utility fee, it was brought up in, in terms of comparisons of some number, whether it's $3 or a dollar and a half. As my friend Harold Hyple has said often, a dollar is better than nothing. If you give me a dollar, I'll spend the dollar. The need is certainly there. And, and if we're talking about going forward for fees, I'd just like to suggest that a roles and missions discussion is appropriate. And, and if the need is there, maybe we not need to consider that as we go forward for an increase in, in the utility rates. And with that, I will be quiet.
Regal and clear, your honor. Thank you.
His member Wilson.
Hey, so my questions have morphed throughout the hour long wait here. So, and just to hit on what council member Scanlon said just now, I, maybe I've asked this before, but can we, is there a way to structure stormwater differently than its own entity? Can it, can it be, I know other cities lump it over into the, the water. Is there a way to do that in that way? Does that make sense what I'm saying, Ken?
And that's what I was suggesting.
I've seen, I have seen aspects of stormwater street sweeping as, as divisions in solid waste for the collection of a lot of that debris. And then it, you know, it becomes a component of an existing utility. And I'll, hopefully we'll get some input from Mr. Francisco. And I do trust his vast knowledge and experiences relates to Oklahoma specifics on, you know, where that, it is a utility where it could live in terms of a division out of the general fund versus a division in another utility fund.
A lot of municipalities back east where the storm sewer and sanitary sewer systems are combined. Basically the rainwater flows directly into the sewer treatment plant. Those, those utilities are combined, but that's very foreign in this part of the country where the stormwater systems are separated from the sanitary sewer systems. I, I don't know that it would be illegal, but it would certainly be unusual and, and, and subject to a lot of disagreement just because it would be so foreign in this part of the country.
That never happens, Anthony. Okay. Well, I'll move on. I just wanted to kind of throw that out there because I, it popped into my brain, but way back to council member Holman's conversation with Ken about the storage tower over on, water storage tower over on, I think Lindsay was what he was talking about. And you talked briefly about lead paint in that and possibly using it for an irrigation situation. I, I had some questions about, I mean, that, that's scary to me. So what kinds of precautions should we take? Is that safe? I know you wouldn't do anything unsafe, but I just, I really worry about that and the lead paint honestly. And even just, just irrigating with it scares me. So tell me a little more about that and help me understand it.
So a long, not that long ago, yeah, lead was in a lot of paints because it helped it adhere and it helped its, its lastingness. So that tank does have lead paint on it. And if it was used for potable use, you'd have to sandblast it down to bare metal. So it'd be a shiny tank and you'd have to paint it really, really quickly and make sure it doesn't rust. That's how bare metal would be. For non potable use, you, you would obviously sandblast the rusty parts and stuff like that, but all the lead paint would then be coated with several milliliters of, not milliliter, milli, whatever the, the measuring thicknesses of paint.
Thickness. Yeah, I got you.
Thickness with, we don't use lead paint anymore. So it would be coated and protected. But because tanks rust and things of that nature and you get little holes in it and, and are they called holidays in the paint? For potable use, they don't want any chance of any lead ever getting, that's why you blast the whole tank into, to bare metal. For non potable use, you would cover all the lead paint. But in the future, if you'd have a little rust spot, there'd be a chance of a little bit of lead paint getting out in the rust. But it would be minimal and it's non potable use. So it really wouldn't do anything.
Okay. Well, I understand non potable use, but if we're using it to irrigate and it becomes vaporized in irrigation systems, oh, that scares me. I'm just going to just, for the record, I have very real concerns about that and they may not be scientifically based. But I just watched the whole documentary about Flint. So just FYI. I, I, I'm scared of that. My other thing was incineration. And I, I love that. I just wanted to say I'm all on board on that. The, and then another, just a quick note, more of a statement than a, than a question, but you know, I pay a service for my business to shred my documents, my sensitive documents, things that can, you know, because doggy daycare is pretty sensitive. But there are things that we don't want just loose out in the world. So we pay a service to come shred that stuff. And they send those, that paper product to the Angel Soft factory to make toilet paper. And as we all know, toilet paper is gold right now. So I'm wondering if anybody on our you know, maybe Daryl, have you thought about checking into going that direction on parts of our, our recycling program? Because that might be a way to go.
Well, you know, um, the way we sort, if we could find a market like that, our ability to sort a little differently may very well pencil out. But I will make contact with the reset, with the shredding services and figure out who their But I will make contact with the reset, with the shredding services and figure out who their. Who they use for access to that market, that's fascinating, I had not heard that, thank you for sharing.
Okay, well, just sharing, and beyond that, I want to say. And not to be a bootlicker, which I've been called a few times, but. Daryl Powell, I really appreciate your vast knowledge on all things, every time we ask you a question, you're just like, boom, I got an answer, so, good job.
That's just because I'm old, thank you.
Me too. That's it, it's all good.
Okay, Councilmember Hall.
Old too, but I don't have all the answers, so that still puts you in a special category, Mr. City Manager, so. Thank you for all of that, Mr. Kaminsky, thank you for. Excellent presentation, and I want to say congratulations again on the. Winning the grant on the IPR project, we know that's a really important project and it's exciting as we look to the future of Norman, so. It was, it was a big deal when it was announced and it's still a big deal, so I'm. I'm excited to see how that's going to develop over the next few years and hopefully we'll. Be able to. Look to the future and solve some of our problems with that, and. I also wanted to circle back to Councilmember Holman because he did beat me to it on the. Porter Waterline replacement because there has been a significant change and. Update on making sure that we extend that project from Alameda to Robinson that. You may not, you know, have 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 been aware of, so I want to make sure that we start that discussion to make sure. That we have the budget necessary that you need. To also be able to work with the Public Works Department to make sure that if we're replacing that water line, that we are able to replace it. Everywhere that it needs to be, so that's really important, I know it's important to Councilmember Holman, it's important to me too and Ward Four, it's a big Ward Four project, and I just want to make sure. That we start the conversation and make, that we're connecting those dots before we adopt the budget, so. Just want to reinforce what Councilmember Holman was saying about that. Also, I wanted, I wanted you to. Make some comments just to. Refresh my memory and help me to understand why there is such a. There's so much time in between all of these different increases for these enterprise funds. It just seems like these are all needs to keep. Our city operating and providing clean water and. Safeguarding our public health and. I I just want to understand a little bit better why we keep putting off these projects because we're not doing timely. We're not taking it to the voters, it doesn't seem like in a timely manner to be able to keep up like it appears that we need to be doing.
Your Honor, that is typically a reality, a factor of political will. It's not a popular thing to do, it is, it 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 costs political capital to do so. But we do recognize the longer you wait, the more you need to ask for, so there is value in kind of getting into a regular. Rotation and taking little tiny incremental bites instead of waiting 10 years and then asking for a big giant chunk, so. Your observations are very accurate.
Well, I, before I became a member of council, I know there's been some conversation about trying to set up a more. Routine rotation. To, it seems like it would be allow us to have much more efficient budgeting. To be able to know that, you know, we could be compiling that data and what the need was if we knew what a regular rotation rate is, so. You know, I understand it's it's always hard to go to the voters, but it just seems like we have these really long periods of time and from your presentation tonight, clearly. You're doing your part of doing the long range planning and trying to anticipate what we need, but. We have to keep, you know, putting things off because we're just not where we need to be, so. I'm interested in continuing that conversation going forward. I think it's really important, I mean, we've had a lot of conversations, we're gonna have another conversation later this evening about. Needs and wants and the current situation that we find ourselves as we're still going to be grappling with. The after effects of living through a public health crisis that we're all living through right now. But, you know, it seems really important that we. Take seriously the request for the water rate increase and that it has been discussed and it has been talked about and it has been. You know, projected in early 2021 to go to the voters to ask for that, so. It's, I am in favor of. Making sure we do what we need to do to be prepared to go to the voters for that, but. I have to say, you know, we're we're asking for a lot of things from our voters right now and, but I think this is a really important thing, and I'm gonna pile on about stormwater because this is a really important issue, and I know it's not. Your department, but I also want to make sure that when I had the opportunity to say, we understand that's important, we've tried so hard to convince. Our community, the importance to have a stormwater utility, so as we're talking about all of these things, I hope we can. Continue to keep that on the front burner and to continue to keep. Trying to help our community understand why that's such an important thing and why that that is a need, that is definitely a need going forward also. All in favor of pursuing the incineration idea, I think it's exciting, I think we have a lot of projects that you have. Presented to us tonight that are really forward thinking and, you know, trying to do the things that we can to be. A cleaner community, and I appreciate all the work that you put into that and the work that you do every day, so thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I don't see any other comments or questions on this item.
My council members are so thorough, I really don't have much to add, we have a lot to work on, and I'm just very excited that we're all looking to the future. Sometimes it gets hard to do when we're bogged down with, you know, a pandemic, but we're keeping our eye on the ball and. Mr. Kaminsky, you and your team do amazing work, I'm incredibly proud of continuing to be trailblazers in a variety of very important areas. That will secure the long term future and health and well being of our residents and our community as a whole. So with that, let's take a five minute break, and then we will resume our second topic. For those of you watching from home, that is. The continued discussion regarding a possible general obligation bond election to include an economic stimulus recovery package for small businesses. All right, go ahead and turn your cameras off and your mics off, and I will see you in five minutes.
Is Joe riding a bike or a horse this time?
I think it's a bike, I was just gonna ask that. Today's episode of What is Joe Carter Doing? Don't hit anything, Joe, eyes on the road or the bike path or whatever it is you're doing.
You're airing it up.
I'm putting down my bike tires right now, it's better than reshooting my horse.
Mayor, it looks like everybody's back on, but Councilmember Holman.
There he is. All right, do we have a presentation on item number two?
Your Honor, we do have a PowerPoint that Ms. Sarah Kaplan put together, the final closed out survey results, the city clerk did mail that press, email that presentation to everyone. Sarah can join us and share her screen if counsel has any questions. One of the things staff was going to recommend to counsel this evening. Is that even before COVID-19 and and all of the fun and excitement we've had over the last six weeks. The Economic Development Advisory Board had a regularly scheduled meeting set for May the 7th. And staff thought it might be a great piece of insight for counsel to consider. If we give the same presentation to the Economic Development Advisory Board Thursday morning at their regularly scheduled meeting via Zoom. And have them, who in their appointed by counsel. Evaluate the slides and have them come up with some recommendations to bring back to counsel. For your consideration at the first reading and second reading of that particular ballot question, so great way to get. So, great way to get some insight from a committee you've already established to look at such things and make some recommendations if council would like to proceed in that way. And we've got Sarah standing by and she can share a screen so we can all be looking at the same thing should council have any questions about those final survey results.
Thank you. I think the feedback from the EDAB would be very helpful. It's why we have those boards and commissions. So, I would be interested in hearing what they have to say. So, for now, for item two, I will turn it over to Ms. Kaplan.
Mayor, before we do that, I believe Councilmember Biermann has a question.
Oh, my apologies. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Are we bringing back all committee meetings in May? Why is EDAB meeting and no one else is? Because I've gotten a lot of questions about the meetings coming back. So, just figured I would ask since it was brought up because I didn't know that they were meeting.
We are, we are starting, a lot of the committees want to start meeting, but we're doing them all virtually for the month of May, the ones that want to meet or that, you know, don't really have anything pressing. They can choose to wait until June if they would like. This is EDAB's normal time and we just felt timing-wise, if they were willing to meet virtually, that this would be a great opportunity to get some input from them about this issue. And they were willing to do that.
Great, thanks.
All right. Ms. Kaplan, take it away.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome to my living room. I'm doing this from home, so if you see a dog walk by, you could just say hello to them. My numbers have not changed significantly since last week, really not at all, but I have a couple more things that I've gone into a little bit greater detail, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen now and hope that this works. Let's see here, and make this full screen here. Can you guys see that? Yeah. Okay. So, as we talked last week, we had the survey open for about two weeks. It was open on May 7th, or April 17th, I'm sorry, and closed on April 30th. The purpose being just to assess what our businesses were feeling at that time. It was during the stay-at-home order and we, our final count on surveys was 384. I will just note that the timing of the survey, when we get to the questions about funding and if people have applied for funding, that it was during the time when PPP applications had ceased for several days and then reopened. So, the funding questions, you know, people might have been in a different situation during that time period. Okay, so section one of the survey, again, same information I presented last week. I'm just gonna go through it a little bit quicker. Majority being very small businesses, probably almost three-quarters of them under 10 employees. Ninety percent of them, one location. This is one that I delved a little deeper into, some of the people that gave additional details on what industry sector they were in. I went back through and classified them back into their NACs code. So, you can see while some of the categories only have like one response in that category, we did have a response in every single NACs code major category. So, you can see that right there. The biggest bar there, kind of towards the middle, is professional service, professional scientists, scientific and technical survey services, so, you know, those kind of professional services. Retail trade was a big one, arts and entertainment, and a couple others that kind of stuck out there there at the bottom. Okay. Again, the majority of them have been in business for more than 10 years and significantly, many of them more than five years even, so that's an interesting statistic. Same information I saw last week, this really didn't change. High, you know, about 50% were female, 60% leased their business base, so that's something to consider as we're looking at assistance packages. Again, 70% did not have an online sales component. And for those that did, it was still a relatively small percentage of their business, usually less than 25%. Section two, again, 60% of these businesses were essential. And then the COVID effect, what, what, what things happened in your business? Loss of revenue being the most significant, and then events being canceled. Business closures, whether voluntary or mandated, added expenses and stuff, I think we all understand those things and several other things down the list. Revenue, again, more than, about half of them had decreased revenue by more than 50% when looking at the previous time period from last year. And then, a lot of them, really in the next six months, are gonna need to make some serious decisions here and could be at risk of closure in the next six months if business doesn't pick back up. Top concerns, losing work, paying rent, employees' financial well-being and their health as well. Same things as last week, none of these numbers changed significantly. This is a question that I analyzed a little further, so this information with about 53% of them saying they needed, they were interested in access to capital, either in the form of grants or loans, and then information to on financial assistance. I took those two top points and analyzed them based on sector. So, this is a lot of information in one slide, but on the left is access to capital and on the right is information on financial assistance over the next 90 days. So, you can see there's a little bit of difference in different sectors. What they need, obviously, like the finance sector doesn't really need info on finance. They, they know what they're doing for the most part, so you can see some differences there in terms of which sectors felt they needed more financial help than others. Then I took the same question and categorized by number of employees. So, you can see that, you know, sole owners, up to 20 employees, about 50% of them said they needed access to capital, whether through grants or loans, and then it kind of diminishes as we get into those larger businesses. So, clear that the need is those very small businesses, under 20 employees and under. So, that's something to keep in mind. The info on financial assistance really kind of went really right in hand with that. So, that's just, that was kind of interesting. I was gonna, I was curious to see if I would see a notable, noticeable difference there, and we really, I think we did. So, that is really, the only thing that really has more info for you guys. Still, 65% applied for PPP, 30% applied for EIDL, 23% did not apply for funding, and so on. The other question here about funding is if you did apply, what was your, what was your status? And if you didn't, what were your reasons for not applying? Again, that didn't really change. And then next steps, that's really up for you guys to discuss. I will make one note, I'm gonna go back to this one. Several of the answers that were submitted seem to say that if I can open back up, then I'll probably be okay. So, maybe, you know, they were, you know, thinking that over the summer, business will come back to normal and they will be back to normal revenue. So, that's just a lot of write-ins on that one, but really, the first two are the kind of key things. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, really not a lot of new information, but.
All right, do we have any questions?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Scott had a comment or question.
Yeah, a little bit of both, actually. So, thank you, Sarah. Really appreciate you putting all this together, conducting the survey and staying in touch. The business community really appreciate that. I don't know if this question is for you, if you can answer it, awesome. But so, did we conduct a survey like this for the essential workers that are non-business owners, the people who are also being impacted by the pandemic?
That's a good question. We, we have not done that. The, you know, the, I, there might have been some other surveys out in the community that I'm not aware of, but this one was specifically aimed at businesses, so.
Would it be, so follow-up question, thank you. Would it be possible to conduct a survey for our essential workers, people who have lost their jobs, people who are being threatened with evictions, things like that? Because, you know, we see is that people are struggling to pay rent on the business side. So, I can only imagine how people who are employed by those small businesses are also being impacted, struggling to pay their rent and, you know, being threatened with eviction. So, could we conduct a survey for just your, you know, essential workers, restaurant, retail, servers?
Your Honor, I think the, the ability, the magic of the question lies in our ability to identify a database where we could hit that target audience as opposed to just putting out a question, you know, available for anybody to come in and, and respond to. I think you get more accurate data if we could, if we could, you know, figure out how to email that group specifically. Hey, would you take some time and answer these questions for us? So, we can do some head scratching at the staff level and see if there is a mechanism, if there's a place where we can access those affected employees specifically to try to get some direct feedback.
So, I have, you know, another comment after this. I know that Councilmember Biermann used to work for a political consulting firm, so she might have some insight on how to target those communities that have been impacted. I don't know. I know that I can do some targeting via Facebook, but they, you know, it's all clicking. So, I don't know if she maybe has some insight. Also, because we're considering this and because these are my thoughts, you know, not only have small businesses been impacted and we're considering a bond to financially assist them, I do think that we need to consider a companion item. If we're going to accept this, we need to consider a companion ballot questioner item that would basically act as the sort of stimulus check that people received from the federal government on our local level to assist those people, those essential workers, those restaurant, retail workers who lost their jobs and who struggle to pay their rent. So, if we're considering, you know, a geo-bond here to help small businesses, we should absolutely, I think, consider these two items that go together. Also, you know, a companion, you know, bond, however it would be funded, that are on the same, they're the same question. I think that they should go together. That way, we're making sure we're covering all of our bases and being inclusive. Does that make sense? Sorry if you have a question about, or need clarification.
We're with you. Makes sense.
But can bonds be used for projects like that, or does it have to be capital? That's my only question about that.
Definitely need some legal guidance on that one, maybe from bond attorneys too.
And I know we, we, I think we have some bond attorneys on this, this call, but I'll just point out that the section under which we are calling, would be calling this economic and community development question and, and what Councilmember Scott is posing would be called under the same provisions. It's not limited to capital only. It's got a lot of different things that you can spend those monies on for economic development and things along that line. It's just says economic development programs, including but not limited to job creation payments, low interest and, and/or forgivable loans. So, my first question would be to our bond attorneys, you know, is there any case law out there, any guidance out there that would allow a stimulus-type payment under this section of statute?
Catherine, this is Nate. I mean, just at first blush. Can you hear me all right?
We can now.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. This is Nate Ellis, Public Finance Law Group. I mean, at first blush, yeah, Catherine's right. There's kind of a broad array of what you could use. I think we would, as we identify specific things, we'd want to look a little bit deeper and, and see if there's been any specific citations to case law or statutes that, that, as I say, some of the capital business assistance is pretty clear as far as the more unemployment question. I, I think that's something we need to take a little bit closer look at before we give a straight, I don't think I can give a straight-up yes or no, just right off the cuff.
I appreciate and respect that, and I absolutely think it would be worth taking a deeper look, especially since it's like it's a possibility, at the very least, that we can look into some sort of stimulus because people are, you know, economic development, I think, is, you know, developing, developing people and professionals. And so, I think that's, I think it's worth looking into. So, I appreciate you guys kind of being able to answer the question a little bit off the cuff and look forward to hopefully, hopefully get some support from council members about looking at that as a companion item to this geo-bond.
Okay, we have Councilmember Biermann.
So, I've got Alex over here reading my mind, because one of the big questions that I had, the first question on my list was, why did we not consider adding workers? We have sole proprietorships included in this. And a sole proprietorship is basically just a fancy name for being a worker. You're doing all the work yourself and you happen to have a business structure that benefits you in a way that doesn't benefit others. And there are significant, significant problems with the PUA program here in Oklahoma. It is not exclusive to Oklahoma, but it is significant here. And so, if you are self-employed, but maybe not through a sole proprietorship necessarily, or you're a gig worker, you are, you are plum out of options at this point because the door has been slammed in your face with PUA insurance. Seven weeks now, not a dime. So, I think that's something we do need to look at. There's lots, to Alex's specific point, there's lots of data collection companies out there that has a scary amount of information about each and every one of you, including socioeconomic status, if that's the direction we want to go. You define the parameters, you buy the information, and you push the survey out. It's also possible to use that for any verification of claims if we were to do something like that. Of course, you know, there's tax returns and all the other things that we could verify with OTC. So, I definitely think that it's there. And it does concern me a little bit to be focused so strongly on the businesses because I think, as most of us know, that money doesn't always and/or all trickle down. And so, you know, there are a lot of mortgage companies and utility companies and, you know, service providers that are gonna get their bills paid, but not necessarily any direct or even indirect benefit for some employees, at least we can't guarantee it. So, this would be one way to ensure that the people in our community who are doing the buying are the ones that are getting at least some of the support. So, I would absolutely be in favor of pursuing that, whatever it looks like. I do have some kind of larger questions and caveats about this. I really would love to see more before, before I can vote to move this on to the voters, what it's going to look like, how the program is gonna be administered, how the applications are gonna be received, by whom are they going to be received? And what kind of reporting and data collection in that? Are we going to have what kind of oversight? Are we going to be giving bonus points for, you know, minority-owned businesses or businesses under a certain revenue, and I certainly want to restrict it to those who have not received any federal assistance? So, that's kind of where I stand with it. I think, I think that we're in a good place with it and it's, and we're moving along and getting, getting some additional details. But I'm, I'm gonna need more than kind of just the, the framework that we have in order for me to feel confident supporting it and then also be able to explain it to the public.
Councilmember Biermann, to your point specifically, our conversation today hinged on our understanding of what type of subscription volume we might anticipate. We recognize what happened to the unemployment system designed for the state of Oklahoma. When it became overwhelmed with applications, the system crashed. It led to mass dissatisfaction with the entire process. And we, we were kicking around, you know, might we get 10 applications a week, 10 applications a day? We might get 400 applications in the first week. And how do we, you know, funnel those down into a manageable process? First come, first served, you know, once the first tranche of, of funds for, you know, the, you know, the revolving loans gets totally subscribed, do you move to the grants? Do we try to do the grants first? Do we just take them in any of those programs and just in, in the order they're received? And is there software that could help us administer those loan applications? So, we were, we were having the exact same mental exercise going on at the staff level today because we've never been here before, and that's, that's not a bad thing. It's just, hopefully, we can at least ask ourselves all those questions that we're gonna have to need to respond to the public with prior to that question being asked to the voters. But we feel your struggle because we are absolutely in the same spot.
And I appreciate that, and I would also like for us to consider, is there going to be a maximum threshold of what people, what a business or an individual, if we're gonna go that route, can get? Are we going to have a limit?
Yeah, we absolutely agree. There has to be a maximum amount. And, you know, the goal, based on the number of respondents to Sarah's survey, and we will be able to determine, you know, what we think the maximum application volume might be based on the survey and what those business needs look. might be based on the survey and what those business needs look like. How much should be grant? How much should be loan? How much should be other, you know, stimulus plan, whatever the plan is? So we think that's, that's absolutely viable. And the initial focus, honestly, with the survey that was developed was in thinking that we know we had several self-employed individuals, new entrepreneurs that did not qualify for any of the CARES Act programs, and they were left out in the cold. So the survey was initially designed to say, okay, we need to figure out who has fallen through the cracks and what we can come up with to catch everyone who fell through the cracks. And it was business focused because that's where the CARES Act money was focused. But I, I think our ability to go back and figure out where the individual needs are is, it's achievable and we'll take, we'll take those marching orders.
Fantastic. I really appreciate it. I had another question. I lost kind of the tail end of it in my head. I lost it. It's all good. Got all my questions answered for now. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
On that note, I'm glad I got called next because I just want to sort of tag on to that unemployment situation. Is there anything the city can do to sort of, I don't know, shake the OESC tree a little bit? Because that's a, I don't know how to describe it without curse words, but it's bad. So just throwing that out there, you don't have to answer right now. But if there's anything we can do, because I have a list of about, I don't know, 50 people that are in a very precarious situation. They qualify for the benefits, but there's just no getting through to that system. And I know it's a huge problem. So if that can be a thing, then I would like for, to see the city work on that for our constituents. Because it, they, just my loosey goosey numbers, it's about a million dollars in the last two months that's missing from our community. If you just say 100 people couldn't get through on the system, it's a million dollars. So anyways, that's all I had.
Councilmember Trump. I'm sorry. Before we move on, Councilmember Trump, Councilmember Wilson, I will let you know that I've had many conversations with our state delegation, asking them for help as well. And they are just as frustrated as we are, unfortunately. So I, I don't know what to blame. The antiquated system, the money's not there, lack of guidance from the federal government. But I agree, that is definitely a hole. If we're addressing where businesses have had a hole, you know, again, like I think of our dispensaries and entrepreneurs that were just unable to qualify. I'm hoping, I, I like the idea of exploring how we can help people who also fell into a hole and didn't get the assistance that they needed. I'd be curious to see again what that looks like. That little bit of guidance from legal was helpful, but we, we don't have all that much time. To remind everyone, first reading, I believe, is still May 12th, correct?
May 6th.
May 6th.
26th.
May 26th. I was like, May 6th is tomorrow. Okay, May 26th. So we do have more time than I thought. For some reason, I had May 12th in my head. And then, but we can change it by second reading. So I, I definitely agree with, let's, let's see what that looks like in helping the, the people who got lost in this whole process as well. Councilwoman Trump.
Just, well, can I just real quick? I want to clarify that I too have been in discussion with the, the delegation for Norman, and they're doing their darndest. There is some sticky point above them that we need to fix. And I would hate to put the burden of this on our local property tax rolls when it could be fixed at the state level. Just, just throwing that out, not to be a debate or a, you know, butthole. All I got is cuss words. I don't.
Okay, my turn?
Yes.
Okay, so I agree with everybody before me. I saw Ms. Kaplan, that manufacturing was a high percentage, said that they were needing capital in the manufacturing industry. And incidentally, I also saw today that Governor Stitt had, well, he might not have set aside the federal money that's owed to our gig workers. There was money set aside for the manufacturing industry. And so I'm wondering what other state monies are going to be or have been made available for business owners through a state economic development COVID package? Because I wouldn't want to ask that our residents have a hike in property taxes when there's much more funding available from the feds through the state. So I would, is this news to you that the, that Governor Stitt set aside money for the manufacturing industry?
Yeah, there, I know that there's a manufacturing reboot, reboot program. I don't know the details on that. So any of our manufacturers, I would assume, can apply for that. I, I don't have the details on it. And I haven't heard of any other specific business packages that can be applied for, but I have seen that that allocation is out there. So it's on the Commerce's website.
We will drill down specifically on that question, Your Honor, and hope to have some information on that subject that we can share with the Economic Development Advisory Board on Thursday and then report back to council.
Great. And if you can make it kind of a larger question of not, you know, I'd like to know the specifics on the manufacturing, but also are there any other sectors that the state is looking to try to help? Or is there a larger economic development package that's going to be open to all small businesses, much like what the feds have done using some of the 900 million or whatever amount it was that the state is getting for COVID? So yeah, we can talk about that on Thursday. I absolutely agree with Councilmember Alex Scott. Whoa. This is, this has been wrenching at me for a while now is, I mean, I know that everybody has felt the brunt of COVID in different ways. I know that small businesses have hurt, but I also know that, you know, we have a lot of people that are terrified they're going to lose their leases. And so just speaking on the same issues that people before me have spoken on, that I, I feel like it's incumbent upon us to represent all of Norman, not just our small business owners. And I think if all we were able to, and it wasn't, wasn't any small thing, but all we were able to do was do the resolution with respect to our tenants who haven't been able to collect the PUA that is rightfully theirs under federal law. Then I think that, you know, there has been PPP money that has been extended for many of our small businesses. So I just, I am hesitant to further increase their rent by landlords passing on the heightened property tax onto tenants when we haven't given them any way to, they're drowning. So if this is a life raft, we need to be really thinking inclusively about who needs a life raft here and what other programs are available, whether it's for the federal government, to other individuals. Are we just repeating the same thing and not really? It's just not who Norman is on, with respect to that. I would follow up by saying I noticed that the real estate industry was also a large percentage of those small businesses. So if you're going to do a, a project like this, rather than sending money directly to a landlord, it would need to be on behalf of tenants that are still living in those apartments and we're not, or rental properties, and we're not evicted, but they're past due on rent. I don't want to just, you know, throw money at an industry just to be thrown in if we, we can actually help the people and the small business owner at the same time. So they need to have not been evicted, but behind on their rent. Does that make sense? So then the next thing would be, you know, just rhetorically speaking, how much have Norman residents received in the last year or five years in revenue in their pockets from the city? This is kind of what Alex was getting to. None? How much has the, have businesses in this city received? We have an actual economic development council that's going to be nice enough to meet with us on Thursday. What is that same committee on behalf of workers in this city? There's not one. So one, you know, we have a, a large contingency of people that have no representation in the same type of way. I mean, we are their representation, but if we're just looking out for the small businesses, there's not a committee out there for them. We are the committee. It's us. So it's important that we keep it in perspective. And then I agree with Kate on any updates about what this program would actually look like. Transparency is incredibly important. And serving those people that weren't able to take advantage of the small business PPP. And on that, Mr. File, you, you made a comment, would it be first come, first served? And you're concerned about inundation. I would say absolutely no on first come, first served because that was the first tranche of PPP loans went to those businesses that were most familiar with navigating the system. And that means that they're well financed. So it's the people who aren't able to pay for private, you know, CPAs and, you know, have a great relationship with their bank because they're so well financed. I mean, it was those truly small business owners that got left out the first time around because it was gobbled up by the well-connected. So I would hope we would not consider first come, first served.
Got it.
I would also throw out there that I know personally, many local bankers of local banks that worked from midnight to 8:00 AM to help get those things processed. So let's give them a shout out as well. We've got some really hard workers in our community.
You bet. We have some great local bankers. I just know from, I'm speaking nationwide, I'm not talking about Norman, but how those, the money, the money bucket was largely consumed by well-connected people. And maybe not with respect to Norman in particular, because we have some awesome local bankers. But anyway, I'm just learning from people that have gone before us. And then I'm going to reiterate that there is TIF money that could be redirected if this council chose to do so. $13 million worth. We don't have to go and raise property taxes. Next.
I haven't seen no other comments, Mayor.
Councilwoman Scott.
Yeah, I was about to say, can I, and Councilmember Allison's last question about the TIF money. Interested, so because of the state of emergency, because of the pandemic, I mean, it sounds like we lost a lawsuit recently about, during this whole situation. So, I mean, if we're looking at this geo bond and, you know, kind of giving back to our small businesses, giving back to our working, our working community, our workers and stuff like that. I mean, what kind of, like, because we already was, we were threatened with a lawsuit, you know, back in November when we made this whole decision, or, you know, last year when we were doing this decision in the first place. And again, with us just having literally lost a lawsuit like yesterday or the day before during this, during this time, and I wonder what that means for the emergency powers that we have now. And so, because that's something that, I mean, if we have those funds available, that'd be great. But, you know, if we decide to make a decision to allocate that because of the state of emergency and then people are like, oh, no, and then they sue us and then we are right back where we started. So, because I mean, it's not, I mean, you know, if the funds are there and we can do that, cool. You know, since we're kind of in limbo right now, great. But I mean, what does that mean for our budget? So if we're going to talk about that, those are some things that I'd want to know about because I'm all about helping our people, all about helping our small local businesses. I just want to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into a deeper financial hole or anybody else for that matter. And we don't, but that's a question, if we're going to consider those things, if we're going to, you know, conversation, those are just questions that I have.
Well, I, I can give you just sort of a quick answer on some of those. We didn't lose a lawsuit yesterday. It was just a hearing on a temporary injunction. There's still an underlying lawsuit that's continuing. So.
People on the internet.
We lost one part of it, but the, the lawsuit continues and, and it's being removed to federal court. The other issue with the TIF, the local emergency does not give us the authority to disregard the Local Development Act. So any amendments to the project plan would have to go through that process. The project area is the only place that those funds can be spent. And there are limits to how broad you can draw that project area.
I hate to interrupt.
We also have contractual issues.
Okay.
And, and nothing about this pandemic allows us to breach those contracts without potential consequences.
Okay, I would have just like, because you said it can only be used in the project area, if we were to use those, if maybe Ms. Kaplan knew of any local businesses, small businesses in that area specifically that were directly impacted? Or if we have that kind of geographical data, anything like that?
Okay.
It's totally fine. Yep, okay.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Hall.
I don't have too much more to add. Everyone else has been really eloquent about all of these different needs. And, and the only thing I wanted to say was to reiterate basically where I was last week too. And that is to make sure that however we structure this and who we structure it for, that we're reaching people that have been left out of the process. And to Councilmember Wilson's point, that we're not filling in gaps that our state has a responsibility to do. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can structure this in a way that we're reaching people who really need our help the most and don't have access to any other way to get it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
And just back to the Councilmember Scott's conversation about our lawsuit. Is there, I don't think I got any emails regarding that lawsuit. And I would like to have the updates because I started getting calls and stuff today, like asking me. And I was like, I don't really know. So just throwing that out there. If you could just email me as we go forward with that stuff and let me know where we're at. Thank you.
We drafted something today, so I'll send that around to council.
Thank you, Councilmember. I believe, Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been answered or asked and answered. So I appreciate my colleagues for their thoughtful deliberation. I agree with a lot of the comments made specifically about looking out for the most vulnerable in our community and people that have been impacted the most by this. I honestly, as much as I hate to say it, really, I, I just, over the last week or so, I, I feel much, much less confident about sending anything forward to voters, actually. I wasn't extremely confident before, but I thought for the greater good of things, maybe we could come together by August as a community and take care of business. I believe the things that we're proposing are absolutely needs. I think several items in the municipal project list that I think are absolutely necessary, immediate needs that are only going to become more costly the longer we wait. I feel the same way for Nolan Forward, that voters have approved those projects already. We have an obligation to do them. And I think we have an obligation to do them the way that our community expects them to be done and which will, in a way that benefits our community for years and years to come. I don't think we can half-ass them, to be frank. And some of them are so expensive in cost, the longer we wait, they, the, the cost is exponential. So we can save people money now, or we can wait and saddle future Norman residents with an even higher bill, is how I feel about it and why I've supported going forward with an August election. because I do think we have, we need to do these things fast. And especially if we're talking about a recovery package like this, August really is too far from now to really help out the people that need it now. So maybe my feelings will change, but based on what I've seen in the last week from a lot of people that want us to move this thing forward and that don't, I'm less confident than I have been. And I, I don't know, that's just the way I feel right now. So maybe that'll change. I appreciate all of you and look forward to continuing discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon.
Head down to myself, I'm sorry. A couple of things. And Councilwoman Holman just pointed it out. We have a $5 million approximate bond issue that we'd put before the voters on the 25th of August. And by the time the bonds were sold, it's going to be November before those funds become available. The need is now, and several council members have alluded to this, that if there were some way to find alternative funds, either from the state or from the feds through the state or whatever, if funds can be identified sooner rather than later, the need is now. I've gotten feedback on Facebook that's kind of a mixed bag with regard to the bond issue. And I would say that it's probably 60-40 in favor of this particular bond issue. I wish I could say the same for the others. I think that there's general acceptance of the municipal needs, and those projects tend to be linked together. You do one, and then you do another, and then you do another. The Norman Forward projects, however, and Stephen mentioned these as well, I agree that they need, if we do them at all, they need to be what the citizens want, not what might have fitted into a budget once upon a time. And that was the purpose of the bond issue. But what I'm hearing with regard to an $83 million bond issue is, that's a lot to bite. It's not the old business about how do you eat an elephant? You know, you cut them up into 10,000 bite-sized pieces. People are choking, in feedback that I get anyway, on that large Norman Forward figure. And what I'm hearing is that, at least the people that have bothered to comment to me, they'd like to see it broken up, that there are some projects that are linked, that the parks, for example, tend to relate to one another. But that's not the case of the aquatic center and multiple, multi-sports facility, for example. And I'm not commenting about the worth of that, that comment, or those projects. I'm commenting about where people are coming down on, on, on these projects. And they want to have smaller pieces, if you will, as opposed to three bond issues, if that's what we're discussing. They divide up, what I'm hearing anyway, they divide up the Norman Forward projects into several. I'm not saying that has to be done. There may be good reasons not to. And Brenda, I'm sorry if you despair from my comments, but that's what I'm hearing, and I have to lay it on the table. So there it is, and for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have any other comments regarding item number two? Councilwoman Petron.
Okay, mine are pretty quick too, just following up on Sarita's for the current lawsuit. I too would appreciate updates. And in fact, I have the following specific questions from, actually, I think they're all former Councilmember Castleberry. Actually, the first one's not. It's a different Ward 3 resident. They wanted to know if we are hiring outside counsel. And then the second question is, and these are former Councilmember Castleberry, who made the decision to remove to federal court? And I want to make sure I say this right, because I don't want it to. If the Supreme Court agrees that the mayor violated the Constitution, is that a violation of the oath of office? And I think maybe he meant if the federal court agrees. And if so, what are the ramifications of violating the oath of office? Is what he'd like to know. And, yeah, the other one was about who, the comment basically is that because council's only employee is the city manager, who directed the city attorney's office to move the case. So those are the questions on that.
Agenda, so I'm happy to answer those offline and outside of this meeting.
Yeah, I knew you were creating a brief or something. I just wanted to pass them along while I had the opportunity. And then, let's see, I also agree, and I think I'm voicing this all along. I think this is a really tough time to be asking voters to open their wallets. I mean, there's just nothing in them. I mean, I was having a conversation with Aaron, and I said, you know what? I'm probably the, truly understand how badly, I'm like the voter that you want. I understand exactly how badly we need the Norman Ford money, and our family would truly use those facilities every day. I mean, we, my kids play these, several of these different sports that are in different facilities, and I would love to have them. And even I would have to sit there and put a pencil and paper and say, am I getting X amount of dollars worth on that facility? Can I even afford right now to do it? And I know that I'm not, there are people that are a lot worse off right now than I am. So I think it's, this is tight times, guys. It's not kidding ourselves if you think that everybody's not trying to figure this out.
Councilmember Carter would be the last one, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Kelly, am I, am I on?
Yes.
Careful, Joe.
A lot of things, and one of the things I'm going to miss the most about serving with this group of people is that you guys do not make decisions based on fear or dog chasing you. But, and one of the hallmarks of leadership is leading people places they're afraid to go. And so I just encourage everyone to not make fear-based decisions, to stay strong with a plan. Those projects have all been vetted by voters once already and approved with high numbers. I have faith that the people will continue to feel that way. The amount of money that we're talking about will be a great economic stimulus to our communities that will amplify and multiply time and time again. In terms of the economic development component, I true am concerned about the worker, the laid-off worker, the unemployed person, the person that can't pay their bills. But there's an old saying that it's far wiser to teach a man to fish or a woman to fish than it is to give them a fish. And I think to look at a jobs training component, you know, I own or my partner in many businesses, two of them may not recover from this depression, I'm going to call it, recession that we're going through. And so those people, these are jobs that they've been trained to do that may not exist again. And so retraining is going to be an important component, I think, of any kind of economic stimulus. An intern-type program, like we've talked before. And then as far as getting money directly in the hands of people, I always try to look for solutions. Not that I like killing birds, but I'll use the saying, by the way, support wildlife. Killing two birds with one stone. The city's going to have a hole because people aren't paying their utility bills. To plug that hole, make the city more whole, it also relieves the burden to these people that haven't been able to pay their utility bills. And that money they were going to use to pay the utility bill, they can now use it for something else that will be multiplied in the local economy. You know, another project would be a beautification project, like we talked about. Vouchers that are used at local businesses, driving business, creating traffic, that's the problem right now. And I do like the timing of this. And while I agree that right now, the federal government's job is to get unemployment checks in the hand of people in November, when this money's available, could be the perfect time when all of this stimulus that we're receiving right now is starting to run out. Because this pandemic thing isn't going to go away tomorrow. I mean, the only thing that's going to give people confidence, I mean, half of the people are scared to death, half of the people don't care. The only thing that's going to give them confidence is a vaccine. You know, we're probably a year away. And so there are going to be a great number of people that just huddle up until that time. And so, again, let's not be afraid, people. This council is going to brave council. We have tackled huge issues, and we've got another one in front of us. And if it's what we believe in, let's lead them. Let's take them to where they need to be. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Do we have any other comments about agenda items tonight? Seeing none, thank you all for your time tonight. Another great conversation. As always, it is an honor to work with all of you. We will get the issues moving forward in the ways that we need to. Obviously, we'll continue discussions about the budget, and we will look forward to hearing back from EDAB about the proposals and the other issues we've discussed tonight. So be safe, everyone. Talk to you later.